We're going to take a break.
Okay.
Close this out. Okay, great with that. We're back from closed session for the Selma City Council Special Meeting. Our city attorney informs us that is there any reportable action?
No reportable action.
Thank you, city attorney. And with that, we will close and adjourn the Selma City Council Special Meeting, take a very brief five-minute break. Thank you, we've been at this since 4:30. And we will be back at 6:15 to open our regular meeting. Thank you, everybody. All right, hello, everybody. We're getting ready to start our first meeting of the year. Good to see everybody. Hope everybody had a happy new year. And we're going to call to order the Selma City Council Joint Agenda. Selma City Council Successor Agency and Parking Authority Regular Meeting on January 16th, 2024. It's 6:16 in the Selma City Council Chambers at 1710 Tucker Street, Selma, California, 93662. And the teleconference location, Villa Neptuno, Baratera, Trans-Peninsular, Kilometer 4, Cal Altisal, CP 23454, Cabo San Lucas, VCS Mexico. The teleconference phone number is 301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 891-6864-5005. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand. And we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Tonight's invocation is from Pastor Lisa Satterberg from the Take It By Forest Global Church Ministries. Welcome, Pastor. Thank you for coming.
Let us pray. Father, we give you the glory, the praise, and the honor. We thank you, Lord God Almighty, for who you are on this day that you have given us. We acknowledge your sovereignty. And we thank you for ordering our steps here today, Lord, as you have placed government in office, Father, to continue to advance a city and to continue to beautify a city and to bring forth a protection for a city. So we thank you for gathering, Father, your leaders tonight. I pray for wisdom. I pray for unity. I pray, Father God, for your Spirit of the Lord to guide and lead them for the better advancement of this city. And, Lord, that your name would be glorified through all of it. I thank you for the shed blood of Calvary that covers this meeting. We thank you, Lord, Father God. We give you all the glory, the praise, and the honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Guerra?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Protemcho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here.
Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member has a potential conflict of interest, may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. To better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation, items on the agenda may not be presented or acted upon in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54954.2B. Oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes and to direct their comments towards the city council, not the staff. Do we have any oral communications at this time? Come on up, please, sir.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Charles Smith. Been resident of Selma since December of 1982. I'm here because there is a vacancy on the Board of Trustees of the Consolidated Mosquito Abatement District. That represented from Selma. I'm resident of Selma, as I said. I'm interested in serving on the Board of Trustees Consolidated Mosquito Abatement District. Be an honor to do that. And I have communicated this request to the city manager, to the mayor, and to my council member person. I don't know if you've had a chance to read those letters yet, but they should be on your desk.
Great, thank you for that. Appreciate it. And, city manager, do we know when the next special district meeting for the mosquito abatement district is going to be held? It appears Mr. Smith is looking for some sort of endorsement from the city in this case.
I don't know off the top of my head when the next meeting is, but if the direction is from council on the next meeting agenda to provide endorsement, we can certainly do that.
Okay. I'm assuming that's what you're looking for, Mr. Smith? Okay, great. As council, I haven't reviewed your email yet. I'm assuming you sent it to the city manager, myself, and the whole council? The entire city council? Okay. All right, thank you for that.
Mail.
Okay, maybe it's in the mail that we received. I'll certainly review that along with the council. And at the next meeting, is council, is there consensus to draft some sort of endorsement statement from the council for Mr. Smith for the next meeting? Or to communicate that to the abatement?
Would that be a future agenda?
Yeah, we need to have that on a future agenda. We can't make that decision in this meeting because it's not agendas.
We'll bring that up at future agenda items. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, any other oral communications? Please come up, sir.
I'm back here again. And I want to know if we're going to get any answers to the questions that I asked before about handicap parking and handicap rental for police station. And if I'm going to get any action on the test that I reported 26, they stole my phone. I didn't get no action. And how they took me in and had me incarcerated, put me in hospital for 17 days from the 36 to 15. Now I want to report on what happened and what they found. And when am I going to get my property back? They stole my folks and everything. And I almost got run over in that corner. And I wanted some car ride pay. And I was told to talk to the city council. Now, when are we going to get some action in person's hour? Because I almost got run over in that corner on Dockry in Nebraska. I'm not here some action and I want some answers. I kind of ticked off because you had me locked up for 17 days. And it's not right. And what charity did you bring? And when they raided my house on the sixth? How come no charity was pressed? And nothing was mentioned, no report. I just know the date. It happened the sixth of October. Now I want reports and I want actions taken now. Now, who is going to answer me now? Or you're going to give me an answer? And I thought that the fresh with the Russians wasn't until you were going to review and see what the race was. And all of a sudden, you passed it. So what's going on? And another thing? You guys are playing games with me and I'm tired of it now. They want to take 30 feet on my property by 305 feet. So my property is in the middle of the street. And they want me to fix it, but then they want to take it. Because it belongs to, no, it don't belong to the city. It belongs to me. And private property. And I'm going to enforce it even if I have to go to the feds. And I'm going to file a lawsuit because I was running incarcerated. The C R M C saying I was 5115. Had me for 17 days. Now, that's a federal sin of abuse. And then you kidnapped me for 17 days. Now, why did what I put in there? I was supposed to be a salesman and it happened in front of my yard. And they claim it happened on the corner. Now, that's not true. Now, I want some answers and I demand answers from you guys. Because you know what? I'm sorry you got playing these games and I'm not going to take it no more. So give me an answer and tell me who's going to get them. And I want from the chief of police, a report about my stolen property. I got no report, no action. So what am I? I'm not a citizen just because I'm fighting you and you can't handle it? You know what? I don't give up. And upset, I'm upset. And who else do you hear that he keep messaging? I think now I thought you were in charge of closing the animal shelter. It seems like the city manager is in charge. So isn't happy with what was the decorations? You guys are supposed to make decisions. It looks like you guys should just pop it up there. And now one person is, two persons are still here and this.
Thank you, Mr. Cadiz. Appreciate your comments.
I want demands and answers.
Thank you, sir. We have any further oral communications here tonight? Come on up.
Jennifer Guerra. I was looking at my property taxes and I noticed that the, they forgot to mention the trash assessment on there. And I'm a little upset because I'm looking at the second installment and it's a little high. I asked about it and I found out that this is.
This is going to be an agenda item.
It's going to be on there, so.
Yeah, so just hold your comments if you don't mind until the agenda item comes up. It was after the fact.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other oral communications coming up, sir?
My name is Santiago Osaguetta. The reason I'm here is I wanted a clarification on the item to terminate the Second Chance Animal Shelters contract that was done at the last meeting in December. And with that vote, there was a promise and a commitment to the citizens to bring back an assessment to today's meeting. I looked at the agenda and there's no, no item to bring the assessment. And that, it doesn't, your man is under page five and six. A lot of us came and we were given a promise and a commitment by city council that that was going to happen. And what happened? Then somebody went and hired those people under whose authority? I thought they were supposed to bring that back and then make a decision after the assessment was discussed. That wasn't done either, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Parveen Sandhu, resident of Selma. Thank you, city manager, city council, for allowing me to speak. Piggybacking off of what Mr. Osaguetta said, that we are waiting for the assessment. Second Chance Animal Shelter, within 26 days, was able to successfully adopt and rescue out over 150 dogs. So thank you. We praise God and the communities of Selma and surrounding cities for stepping up and adopting and rescuing these animals that we had housed there. The council was assured that the transition would go very smoothly after, you know, our contract was terminated on the 31st and that the public would be well-informed on what would come next. You know, what entity or whatnot. Unfortunately, that was not communicated well because we still had people contacting us, obviously. You know, because that's what the community knew of, hey, we've got dogs. What do we do? And so we were directing them, you know, to PD to contact them for any of their needs. And when people were reaching out, they were being told there's no system. They don't have scanners. We'll let them know. And that was being communicated back to us. And, you know, we no longer service the city. We ourselves called, hey, there's a stray dog or hey, somebody needs help. And we were told, oh, we don't have a scanner. We don't have a system. So there was a huge disconnect for about nine days before there was an actual statement put out or communication of who has taken over, what hours are, and all of that. So that infrastructure was lacking. I know that the council had raised that concern to make sure that the public was informed of what to do. And this, you know, service of animal care and control is a big deal because it does pertain to public health and safety. So that is a concern. Also, assessments were promised that were going to be conducted. We are waiting on those assessments as well of what assessments were done at the shelter, what the outcome was, and, you know, how to move forward from that. You know, so we would like those questions answered of why there was such a lack of communication with the community and even with the other rescue organizations. You know, and we would like that information presented and know why it took nine days for the city to communicate that to the city when.
Thanks for your comments.
And what is, to piggyback on what Parveen said, we've been getting phone calls, text messages up until today asking where do we send dogs? Who do we call to pick up dogs? I have stray dogs around the house and no one's picking them up. We've been directing all the calls and text messages to Selma PD. To this day, we're still getting those phone calls and text messages from the same people that reached out to us at the beginning of the month. I myself was there on Monday and the facility was empty. There was nobody working. There was no dogs in sight. So you mean to tell me that from the first to today, no dogs have been picked up in the city of Selma? Like magically, all the dogs disappeared? Where did they go? So we would like to know what's being done? What processes are being implemented? Like Parveen said, we were promised to get an assessment. And I think council was promised the same thing. So if this assessment's being done, who is it being done by? And when are we supposed to get it? We completed our contract at the end of the year. And one of the conditions was that we needed to get the number of animals down to 50 come December 31st. Well, our numbers went down to zero. So Second Chance fulfilled their commitment and we got every dog adopted. So I think it's fair that we demand answers and we get those answers. I know there's people that were hired and they're in the animal rescue community. They're very respected, which I commend them for that. It's not so much against them, but it's like we want answers from the individuals that promised that we were going to have services come the first of the month. And their concern is the community's safety. And 15 days, the community hasn't been safe because these dogs have been running the streets. It's been freezing cold outside. And these animals have just been roaming around. So who's responsible for having those dogs picked up?
If anyone else? Anyone online?
Rose Robertson. So I'm looking at the annual service, the animal service management and annual service officer positions. We're looking at the management position for $6,015, $6,015 between, and 76, 77 monthly. And then the animal service officer, 3,800, between 3,800 and 4,850. So I'm trying to put the salaries together. If I'm not correct, please correct me or bring it to the next council meeting, too, so the citizens can make sure they're understanding this correctly. If I'm correct, we have salaries that are going to be paying 15,000 per month now. And I don't even know if that's benefits including, included. Is there going to be a kennel tech included in there? Or is that separate? So that'd be additional monies as well. So I know that I did get a bunch of texts because I think people still thought we were on the board. And I told them we were not. I never was on the board. I just used to clean for eight years, every Saturday with community kids and just, just doing our, our part, cleaning the kennels. That's what we actually did every Saturday from eight to by one or two. But what I did get a couple, a couple people that stated that the shelter did smell. And maybe it did. We were there when it would smell. You know, here, we had tons volunteers for 10 years, community service. We had part-time jobs for, for kids. It is just amazing to me that something that was so great for our community, that the community and the citizens paid to do. And, and it was successful. Now, if they did smell for a bit and they were in a rush to get rid of, try to adopt these dogs, maintenance could have came and helped out. The city should have helped out to continue this going. PD, this is now under public safety. The funding is going to be coming out of public safety now, if I'm correct. And if I'm not, please bring it back to the next council meeting so we, we could understand where all this money's going to be coming out of. What they could have did is re brought this shelter contract back and reallocated the funding. It did not have to be 30,000 every month. It could have went right back down to 8,000 a month, kept the shelter going, and had our community and our citizens continue to be involved. So very unfortunate, but maybe some, there'll be some turnaround eventually. But again, I like to see where that funding is coming from. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online? Thank you. With that, we will move on from oral communications to our special presentations. Our first special presentation is the introduction of new staff.
Yeah, we can start with Police Department. Well, we do have quite a few new staff to introduce. So, well, Chief Alcaraz is already standing. So go ahead, take it away, chief.
Well, you guys all got me corn swaggled here. I don't know where to go. So actually, I forgot. We do have new staff. With us today is Terry Rockhold, Angela Brum, and Sally. Sally, I apologize, I forgot your last name. Briar, I apologize. They are the professional team that'll be running our animal services center from now into the future. So we're extremely excited to have these three professionals that are truly, I truly believe, the most professional and experienced people in Fresno County now working for the city of Selma. I will tell you that I'm not a smart man at all. But, but what I do know is how to hopefully build a great team. And, and that's what these three professionals are going to do for us as we take the city of Selma forward into the future for animal services. So we're extremely excited to have them. Their professionalism throughout this whole process has been just unbelievable. And I really appreciate them being here. And I don't want to embarrass them, but I just want to introduce them and introduce the council into our community. So thank you.
Thank you, chief. Welcome. Deputy city manager, would you like to introduce your staff?
Absolutely. So community service, or not community services, community development is more than happy. We couldn't be happier to introduce Matt Cochran. He's our first days today, building inspector for community development. So in community development, we are fully staffed as of right now. Our plan is for Matt to have office hours in the office for people to come by, ask questions, and then he'll have a specific schedule for building inspections and doing some plan check in-house. So we couldn't be happier to have Matt.
Thank you for that.
Welcome aboard, Matt. Deputy, or excuse me, Community Services Director. Just got a motion.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I am very excited to announce two of my new staff today. The first one is Jennifer. She, I can't see her from the podium, but if Jennifer could please stand. So Jennifer is our administrative assistant. The great thing about Jennifer is she was actually brought on from a temp agency. And she did such a phenomenal job for us during that time. So when the recruitment opened up, she applied and, and she is here. She's been doing a great job. It's, it's really great for our department. I think this is the first time in, I don't even know how long, that we've been able to have a full-time administrative assistant to really assist with all the needs of the community that we have. So I'm very grateful to her. I'm also incredibly excited. This is his very first day. So, you know, no time like the present to put him on the spot. But Brian, if you could please stand. Brian is our new recreation coordinator. So he will be heading up some of the, the youth sports programs, adult programs, and some of these new leagues that you guys are starting to see pop up. He will be coordinating that for us. So we're very excited. He comes to us with a background in recreation. He has worked for other cities in the past. So we're excited to be fully staffed and bringing more programs to our community.
Thank you. I believe that's all the new staff that we have for tonight. So as a city manager, it's great to see our positions being filled and especially filled with such enthusiastic folks who are highly experienced in the roles that they're going to be performing for the city of Selma. So welcome aboard, all new employees. Thank you.
Come, everybody. Thank you. Come, everybody. Thank you. And, um, city manager, just a quick, a quick note. Cause we, we've changed things up just a little bit since the last meeting, um, regarding the animal, um, services center. Um, we did, the two positions were created at the last meeting for the manager and the technician. Um, the special projects manager, um, Ms. Rockhold. Um, I didn't see, I had asked, I think at that point it was gonna be a contract with Fresno Humane or something. It was a different, it was, it was different. And now the city has apparently hired, um, an animal services, um, not a manager, but a coordinator. Overall, and is the city going to be able to see that contract? And the actual pay scale for that, like the city was with the, um, two new employees or the animal center? Are we gonna? See that? Is that already, is a special projects, um, manager? Is that already a position with the city in? Is Ms. Rockhold going to be fulfilling that role? And will the city council be seeing some sort of background on that?
If that's what you'd like to see, absolutely. I mean, it's all public information, but, um, as you recall, a mayor, um, the special projects manager position was. Created actually last year, if not the year before, um, sometime within the last couple of years. Um, to address, um, staffing, um, you know, deficiencies, deficiencies and, and to, um, provide some flexibility. So. Yeah, absolutely. If, if that's what the council's requesting, that could be something that you can bring up in the future agenda items.
Cool. Cause I'm just, I got your email here that we were gonna see something from Fresno Humane in terms of the contract with Fresno Humane.
But as you know, um, there is no contract with Fresno Humane and we are still, as we discuss in closed. Well, there's items in that we discuss in closed session that are still pending, uh, for us to fully complete our assessment. So, um, I mean. We discussed that earlier. So, yeah, we, we can absolutely, we still plan on bringing something back. Um, as, um, you know, staff said they would, um, but there's plenty of information that we're still waiting on to complete.
Gotcha. And just to clarify, I'm not asking for an agenda item, just asking for the role of the special projects manager and the pay scale for that, just so the council.
Sure. Yeah, I can send that to council as a memo. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, next special presentation is police department body worn camera presentation. Chief Alcaraz.
Okay. So now I think it's supposed to be over here. So. Okay. So, um, Rain is gonna run our PowerPoint for us. I'll try to make this quick and painless. As you all are aware, we've been working on getting a body worn camera program up and running for the last eighteen months. We finally are there. So we're looking at implementation. We jump ahead already? I mean, you're more excited than I am, right?
Like I'm watching Netflix.
I don't know where I came with cornswoggle. I think I was watching Pirates of the Caribbean or something. Bear with me. Been a long day. So, um. This is just a quick PowerPoint presentation, tell you a little bit about our body worn camera program and the necessity for it and kind of the process on how we got from. From its thought to actually implementation. So if we can go to the next slide, I think everyone knows I'm Chief Rudy Alcaraz with the Selma Police Department. Or else I better be, right? So, uh, what we did was, um. We chose to go with the Axon body worn camera video. We actually, um. It, it took a while to get this program up and running. One of the benefits to that was this Axon Body Four came available. Uh, onto the market, which is gonna, to, going to allow us, um, some different capabilities in the future. As we start to add on to the program and, um, kind of tweak it to our needs for the future here in city of Selma with regards to. Law enforcement. I can go to the next, right? Oh, is that the video? Okay. And then there, let's go with the video. Pretty cool. I think they got me in here, so. So again, if you, you probably couldn't tell, but I think they superimposed somebody's face on my body running. That, that was. Cause I'm in supreme, uh, health. So. The acquisition of these emerging technologies are gonna be huge.
It's AI, chief. It's AI.
It's AI. It is. It's, uh, these guys, I thought they went on strike. Um, anyways, there, there will be, um, a huge part of the future for law enforcement, but for many multitude reasons. But the most clear, the transparency, the accountability, the evidentiary proof, um, you know. Back in the day, our word was, was gospel twenty-five, thirty years ago. Now everybody wants to see a video. Um, so this, this is a huge, huge steps towards being able to provide that to our prosecutors. Um, accountability, increase in criminal convictions and reduction of liability. I think those are all very kind of, um. The most transparent, uh, reasons why we, we use body worn cameras, uh, today and into the future for law enforcement. We can go to the next slide. So again, we, we chose to go with the Axon Body Worn Four, uh, Camera Four. Um, there's a multitude of reasons. I, I can probably. Start to, uh, I'm gonna throw a little plug here, but, um, Axon is one of the major vendors for law enforcement. And they're actually starting to really kind of, uh, pull their market together with different technologies as well as. Uh, hardware, software, things of that nature. Um, they, they, they really are cutting edge when it comes to law enforcement services, especially, um. They're starting getting into software, report writing, CAD systems, things of that nature. All these things will work in conjunction with one another as we move forward. And become more self-sufficient here in the city of Selma, especially with law enforcement services. So. Um, this, this Axon Body More, uh, Body Four, um, is, is kind of. Will be an integral part as we start to add more, uh, features to these, the services that we provide. I think the next one. Additionally, um. This, this camera's gonna offer enhanced audio and video capture. They're gonna, you're gonna get a better picture, hopefully. Uh, it's gonna activate when we deploy our tasers. It'll activate when we hit our code three lights on. Uh, it has integrated GPS data so that we can show where our people are at as long as the camera's with them. We'll have live stream capabilities. It is an iCloud-based, uh, program. So. This should reduce the amount of software that we have or servers that we have to have to be able to capture that data. And then it has an evidence dot com feature, which is extremely important. Because right now the Fresno County District Attorney's Office uses evidence dot com. So one of our biggest problems, or not problems, but issues is. When we're downloading video from certain crimes and sending over prosecution to the D's office. We physically have to download it onto a flash drive, drive it up to the district attorney's office and, you know, in some, some. Cases, which we'll talk about later, you have just gigabytes of data, which, you know, now you're buying an external hard drive at fifty to a hundred dollars. Uh, each, each, each time you have to download that, uh, that data and get over to the D's office. So by having evidence dot com, we can now just forward that over, or actually the district attorney's office will have access to those, uh, files. So that, that's a huge, um, benefit to efficiency and, uh, time. We go to the next. There's one of our lovely, uh, young men. We just issued him this smile so he can start using it now. So, uh, this is Anthony High. What, part of what we did for this implementation process was, we spoke with other agencies. Fresno PD, Close Police Department, uh, Reedley Police Department are all using the Axon program, or I'm sorry, the Axon vendor. Um, so we actually got some cameras and use them, deploy them out on the streets as a, in a testing phase, just to see. Kind of what the, the results were and how that information was shared. We got, we gathered supervisor input because our supervisors will be the ones that be, uh, in, uh, charge of. Overseeing this data and making sure that it gets captured properly. We also met with the Selma Police Officers Association because they're the ones that'll be using. Um, this technology and this hardware. And then we created and published policy that's already in our policy manual, uh, after. Conferring with all these different, um, employees and, and levels of management. So that, that we are ready to go. I can get the next state or slide. And I don't know why Andrew looks so upset, right? But, uh, there's Andrew and Anthony High. Um, they'll be a part of the train to trainer program. So on January twenty-third. Axon is saying their representatives down here, they will train some of our, uh, management and, um. Quasi-supervisory personnel so that they can turn around and train our people out in the field as they're going through these programs. We're going to give our people sixty to ninety days to kind of learn. You know, kind of how to use this, this information. Cause like anything, you know, you gotta remember, push the button. Turn it off, download, things like that, uh, before we start really kind of getting heavy-handed with, um. Documenting memos, letters of counsel and things of that nature. Uh, we wanna give them some time to kind of get used to this new equipment. Um, and so, but as of January twenty-third, I think the twenty-fourth, they will hit the streets and, and. And be capturing that data. So we're extremely excited to have this, this technology. It's, uh. Long overdue and extremely, uh, we're excited to have it. It's gonna cause, uh, a lot of, it's going to. Make our jobs a lot easier, right? So with that, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, chief. Does anybody have any questions about the body worn cameras? Great. Anybody from the public? Sure, step, step up. You have a question?
Can I control the cameras when they turn on? Can they turn them off automatically or they turn on automatically when you approach a subject? Or can they turn off when they want to or how does it work?
If you could address the council.
You know the answer?
I don't. I'm gonna redirect towards the chief, but.
Now, how do they control, uh, when the cameras go on or when they turn off? Or can they turn them off when they don't wanna record something? What causes them to turn on by themselves? Motion or when you approach a subject? Or when you don't wanna record and you don't wanna be recording? Who controls that? That's my question.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Chief?
Yeah. So there are certain triggers, like if you activate your code three emergency lights on your vehicle, they'll turn on automatically. If you deploy your taser and break the holster. It'll turn on automatically. They can turn it on automatically once they go on scene. Um. And they turn them off once the, the scene is cleared. Those, all those things timestamp with our CAD system. So we can tell when they're turning them off and turning them on. So now if there's an accidental turn off, obviously that's part of new equipment, learning. You know, learning, if, if you look at an officer in today's society, uh, with the load bearing vest, they have so many tools on their vest. They're constantly moving around. So, you know, we expect things like that to happen, but I, I think that'll be minimal.
Is there, um, a learning curve on this? So is, you said it was sixty to ninety days to get comfortable with it?
Yeah, we were gonna give them sixty, ninety days. Start with sixty days that we feel like, okay, hey, we might need a little more time. We'll give them a little more time. Um, additionally, you know, new personnel coming onboard, all those things are factors in that, in that acclimation period. Uh, so you train the trainers, trainers, you know, training, vacation, things. Those are things that we just. You, you can't sit down, look at all those different, um. Circumstances. It might delay full acclimation, but they'll be deployed immediately.
Got it.
So one more question.
Sure.
Now they approach a subject on walking, who turns on the camera? They do? Or what's the, the camera in motion if you approach a subject that's walking? I'd like to answer another to that. And can a private citizen?
One, one at a time. Chief, did you catch that?
Yeah, the officer would activate that.
Officer would activate.
One more question. See, they're gonna record the public. Can the public where a camera record them in case they leave something out? You know, if they wanna leave something out and they would say, well, we didn't.
I think I, I think I get it. Can the public do the same thing and record with their cell phone?
But fair is fair, right?
Mr. Mayor, the council's been doing that since phone, email with cameras.
Got it. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chares. We got someone else who wanted to ask a question. Come on up, sir.
What was my answer? Now, public can get a record, right?
Oh, yeah. It's public rec, public records, right, chief? Unless there's sensitive information.
Or sensitive, according to them or what?
Obviously there's redaction, you know, based on.
They did, and I wanna know they did wrong.
Response, sir.
You wanna ask a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chares.
So another reason that we use Axon is their redactions a lot more user-friendly for our management team and for our, our records. Uh, division as well. But yeah, it's, this is all pure requestable.
Redactions are people who are not involved in the case and.
Correct. Age, like juveniles, minors, correct? You know, um, victims in certain crimes, right? Those, those things.
They're still retained. In the event of a court order to get that information.
Absolutely.
A judge, you know, a court could look at that differently, but. But it'd be redacted initially.
That would be under the discretion of the judge.
Got it. Thank you. Do we, another question, sir? You wanna come up?
Uh, Jim Avadil seventeen oh one Dinuba. To the council. Thank you for allowing the cameras to come about, you know, come about for the citizens and the, uh, chief. This is a great tool, um, and also the great tool for the citizens of Selma because, um, unless you've been in a ride along. Uh, I've been in a ride along with the law enforcement and, uh, I'll be straight up with you guys. Uh, every situation is different and like the chief says, accountability and also the tool for learning for our new officers. Is a great tool, um, because everybody got, uh, cell phones, uh, but they could be altered. These cameras cannot be altered. It goes through a system, I'm pretty sure, uh, chief. Uh, I, I don't know if you can elaborate it, but. Uh, it goes to, uh, not through his office, through a, a server operational that's protected, you know? That way, it, they're sure the safety and the responsibility and correct footage is on there and it can't been altered or turned off or whatever. And accountability. So it's, um, once again, I believe, um. In cameras big time. Uh, I, you know, I'm in the shop via center with the cameras. Uh, I use great tools, uh, uh, to help. The law enforcement and the people that are, you know, the tenants, uh, to make it safe. And, uh, those cameras are great, uh, great tools, guys. Um, it took, I'm sorry, it took a long time. It takes a process. I get it. Uh, but it's gonna get better. Uh, you're gonna see the big difference with the new officers wearing them and the older gentleman too. Uh, there'll be a lot. Safe situations for the officers and the citizens in case when they come across a, uh, situation where it gets ugly. It's recorded sometimes, oh, he said this, he said this in court, this way, it won't be no, he said. It'd be on the footage, right there, live footage. Oh, I guess I did act that way, you know what I mean? So it does happen, you know? And, uh, but once again, guys, um, you know, always improve the, uh. Surveillance cameras, uh, new technology is good. Um, later on, I'd like to see it hooked on to the era. To all the cameras in our community, these cameras, body cameras, that way we can live footage for entire town. Uh, thank you very much for allowing me. Thank you.
Anybody else with a comment or question? Come on up, sir.
I just have a quick question. Um, since you're uploading to, um, a web-based. Server or whatever you call it, isn't there a concern about the, the server being hacked? And all this stuff, I mean, come on now, some of these people can hack into the government. My, my concern is if they were to hack into the system and put out information of stuff that's happening in Selma, uh, that's a liability on somebody. That's my concern. Cause I know, uh, well, you know, you see it on the news all the time. All these big companies have super. Computer and supercomputer workers are getting hacked. And not just by people in the US, by everywhere, China, everywhere, Russia, all those guys are super smart. So. Just a concern that, you know, hopefully it doesn't happen and you end up seeing all that stuff on Facebook. Which is the wrong place to have all that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question, um, chief. Is there repetition and dual records and triple records kept? And backups?
So it's cloud-based. Everything's going to the Axon servers, um, Fresno Police Department, Close Police Department, a lot of very reputable organizations. Use Axon. Um, is there? Is there a possibility it could get hacked? I I would imagine anything's possible, correct? But the likelihood is improbable. Again, this is part of our new world.
And there's a service agreement with Acton that that says that addresses that very issue if there's negligence on their part in allowing themselves to be, provide that prudent security for their footage, I would imagine in their agreement.
Right. Yeah, and I would also say that, you know, if the city was storing the footage on site, you know, it could get hacked there as well, right? I mean, wherever it's being stored, there's a possibility of it being hacked. But they are, Axon is much more capable of providing security for the footage than the city of Selma would be. And yeah, I think if we also, if we were storing it on site, there would be a need for an incredible amount of storage capacity and servers and, you know, all these things that we just don't have the space for within the police department or any of our city facilities. So from a security perspective, it's better to be stored in the cloud under Axon as well as from a facility's perspective as well.
Is there a an amount of time they have to keep that footage on file before they can get rid of it?
There is. I I want to say it's about a hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days per footage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, and don't quote me exactly. It's it was a lengthy contract, but it 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 lasts for quite some time.
In that presentation, could that be made available to council? Could you email that out to council that you provided?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll send that out to council.
Thanks a lot. Anybody else?
Rose Robertson, I just want to say this is very positive for the city of Selma as many citizens, including myself, have been screaming for body cams for many, many, many years. And it's nice to know that the Selma Police Department is going to be right in there with the neighboring cities that have body cams. My question is, the the police officers will start having them on. What what was the date on that?
Chief, did you have a date on the implementation?
January twenty-fourth.
January twenty-fourth. And those will just be similar to if somebody needs, incident would be a PRA. They can just PRA the video if they need to correct, same thing, just like the other neighboring cities.
Is this a public document, just like any other record?
Public Records Act.
Yes, subject to redaction or age and that kind of thing.
Yeah, so very, very, very good news for the city of Selma. Thank you.
Anyone online? Like say anything on the phone? Okay, thank you. With that, well, this is a special special presentation. There's no vote on this. If council would like to weigh in, now's a good time. Councilman Trill? Got his hand up.
Just, you know, I I just want to commend the police department and the city staff for all the hard work that they did. You know, it goes back and I want to commend the city council because, you know, think of this, you know. We were waiting for grants, you know, trying and we're fortunately, hopefully that we would get the grant. And, you know, it was, it was, it was, it was a good move for the city council back in last year's budget that we included it in the budget and we approved it. Because then what turned out is that we didn't get the grant, but guess what? We had already approved it in the budget. So I congratulate the council for having the foresight of understanding hard decisions and making those in fact, you know, in the budget. Because things like that, now here we have, it's it becomes, it becomes a tool and it becomes something that's really important for our community. So for that, I commend all the council because we, the foresight was looked at and we 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 accomplished it and didn't get the grant, but got the, got the, still got the body cam still. For that, I thank you, guys.
Jim, anything else? Then we'll move on to our consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Does anyone have anything they would like pulled from the consent calendar tonight?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item M. Check register.
Anyone else? I'd like to pull item A, the minutes for the December fourth meeting. Hearing no other requests to take items off, I'll ask for a motion to approve items B through L.
Make motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Truhyu?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, item A is consideration of the minutes. And my question is specifically regarding the city council approving the Waste Services Contract with Mid Valley Disposal. As those folks who were here for that meeting recall, there was no pricing included with that. And I was wondering if that contract with the pricing was going to be included in the minutes. It's it's not. Where is the contract with the actual rates? Is that something that the council can receive? Because I I don't, I don't see it here.
Yeah, the pricing was was provided when the RFP was taking place. But normally, documents aren't included with the minutes, but that's something that we can act, we can definitely send out to the council. And I'll include that with the memo for the special project manager as well.
That'd be great. Because, I mean, an RFP is great, but a contract is a contract which is legally binding. And I think that should have the rates. And I think it's good to have that as memorial for so people see what the pricing is. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the minutes of the December fourth meeting? Is there a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve item A. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Call the roll, please.
Sorry, who was the second?
Mendoza, Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Truhyu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Okay, item M?
I have a couple of them on the register, page two sixteen, check number eight three zero four one for Golden Shovel Agency LLC Eco Division Agency Services Marketing Blueprints for the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. What was that for?
That's the rebranding project that the city is undertaking currently? Or that is right. Okay. I I thought it was the downtown strategy, but it's the rebranding that the city's undergoing.
And then I have the Cal card. Okay, I'm not sure. Pages two twenty-eight says Nicola Anderson. And it says for Broadway, San Francisco. And there's, it says Sac Team Tickets to Lion King, one's in the amount of three thousand and the other one is in the amount of twenty-two fifty-one. What what was that for?
Yes, I can answer that. That was the kids from Sac Team Raised Funds. And they took a trip to see a real Broadway play in San Francisco.
Those for the kids?
Yes.
Okay, then I got another one here. I got a phone call from one of my constituents in my district and asked me about Fernando, for you, Santion, a Ridge Creek Golf Course Executive Team Offsite Meeting in the amount of three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. I've never seen that before.
Yeah, that's because it it's never happened, except for that one time. And we actually have bimonthly executive team meetings off-site. And that particular meeting happened to be at the Ridge Creek Ridge Creek Golf Course. And the money that was spent was simply for for the meals that were part of that off-site meeting.
Then I have another one here for, it looks George Spian. And it says transit and speed credit for incorrect charge in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents. What was that for? Or what? It says it's a credit.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that that page number?
Page two twenty-two. And it says transit and speed credit for incorrect charge. And it's, well, it's in parentheses for four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents.
That is a our transit manager, our former transit manager, and that's a a cost that is reimbursed by the by FC RTA. But I can follow up for more information.
I think I have. I got. Those are all mine.
Okay, I had a couple, just a couple items. One is the page two eighteen, item eight three one four one Glacier Refrigeration and Air, Public Works, new thermostat for senior center refrigerator. It's it's a small item. The question is, we're not using the senior center right now. Are people going in? Is it safe to go into the senior center right now?
No, that 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 is actually at the Pioneer Village Senior Center.
So it's mislabeled?
It, yeah. So it we're caught, we, it was mislabeled as senior center because we are operating out of Pioneer Village. So that refrigerator was moved so that we didn't have to purchase a new one.
Got it. Good. Thank you for that. Okay, and then item eight three one five three Kingsburg Veterinary Clinic for a PD canine visit. Again, animals need to be taken care of. The question I had is, will the, is there a contract, an agreement in place with the Kingsburg Veterinary Clinic? I believe the previous animal service provider had an agreement with another veterinary clinic. Will, and if you don't know, you don't know, but because it's new. But will the city be using the Kingsburg Veterinary Clinic for veterinary services? Or will the city be going through another provider?
We will use as many veterinarian services as are available because those are in very short supply. So my expectation is that we will probably have agreements with various vets.
Right. And then item, I'm sorry, page two nineteen, item eight three one nine four, Ariel Yamin HR Settlement Agreement, fifteen thousand. I withdraw my question. Okay. And then page two sixteen, item eight three zero two four, DL two five two Inc., Public Works Golden State Project for twelve thousand. What, that's a Measure C project. What's the city contributing on that? What's that for?
That, there was some plans that had to be revised on Golden State. The design that the contractor or the architect for that project on behalf of the county, they, what they provided was not acceptable to the city because it was landscaping that was going to require extensive amounts of water, maintenance, et cetera. So we reviewed the plans and we said, instead of doing that type of landscaping, change it to this. Well, that required plant, changes to the plans. And so because we were the ones requesting the changes, we had to pay for the work that it entailed to revise the plans, which in the long run is going to, you know, we're going to make that money back in terms of maintenance and water and and all the expenses.
So this is to provide, I had heard something about drip line, putting drip line in instead of another type of sprinkler for the trees.
That was one of the changes, yeah, but also the type of landscaping that was provided.
Will there be sensors used?
The irrigation system control was one of the design changes that was made.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then finally, item eight three zero four three, Hanson Bridget LLP Administrative Investigation Review, seven oh four fifty. Are they concluding that? Is that an administrative investigation review of me, the mayor? Or is this a council topic? Or is this what's going on there?
That is the final invoice for the previous investigation.
The one before that?
The one.
The one subsequent to that?
They have not been in that one.
Oh, the second one?
Correct.
Okay.
So that is the final payment that you will see for them on that investigation.
Got it. Okay, does anyone from the public have a question on the check register?
I have a question, actually.
Councilmember?
I have a, or comment, actually, question, comment, I don't know. City manager, and we have a check signing policy, right? As far as who signs the checks? And so I'm assuming that, because this is the way it happens in my, at my office, is that my board chair or my board vice chair are the signers. And then either the executive director or the finance manager are the secondary signers. Is that what we have here, that we have the mayor, Mayor Protem, the first signer, and then city staff?
Correct.
So if there's any questions about signing the checks and things, that would be something that could be brought up at the time that the checks are signing, correct?
For the most part, yeah, mayor and Mayor Protem sign the checks, not just accounts payable, but payroll as well. And then if they're not available, then myself or the deputy city manager are authorized to sign as well. But yes.
I just had, just for clarifications, I'm just wondering because if 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 there's questions about the checks, wouldn't it be questioned before you actually sign the check? So that's, I'm just questioning. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to respond to that implication, when I, when I come over and sign the check, sometimes they don't have the second check signer, the city manager, the deputy city manager. I'm asked on a moment's notice because there are lots of checks that need to be signed. There are four authorized signers. And in terms of being able to, you know, question the city manager at that time because, as the council is well aware, I I'm not allowed to talk to city employees about certain charges. I mean, I can ask if there's something, the problem with the particular check, the way it's, you know, made out. But I can't ask detailed questions. I have to ask the city manager, and the city manager is usually not available to answer my questions, nor should he need to be while I'm signing the checks or the Mayor Protem for that matter. Plus, I'm not going to hold up the checks, the check signing at the time. But I am going to question it in public so that the people can hear it. And maybe they'll catch things that I don't catch. That's the whole point of having public meetings instead of behind closed doors. So I I hope that elucidates the the matter.
Rose Robertson, I normally look at those check registers as well when they're published to the citizens. I didn't get to do it this time, but you guys do a really good job asking questions and we really appreciate that because it is our taxpayer money and that's your number one job is to oversee the funding of our citizens' taxpayer money. My question was at the last meeting, there was a check made out to Beverly Cho for five hundred dollars. And it was stated that it would be voided at at this council meeting. Was it voided in the registered check? I didn't get to see that. It was not voided. It was specifically stated that would be brought back through the check register to be voided because we all know that council members should not be having any checks written out to themselves. Thank you.
You want to answer that? It's already been refunded under the lion's clip.
Correct. Yep. So the checks already been refunded under the.
Yeah, under the lion's clip. It went back to the lion's. My check was voided.
Thank you. Any other items? Okay, is there a motion to approve that, the check register, item M?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor, sorry, Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Gara?
No.
Councilmember Truhyu?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
No. Okay, on to our regular agenda items. Our first item is consideration of a resolution declaring that there is a need for a parking authority to function in the city, declaring that the city council shall be the parking authority and designating an interim chairperson and vice chairperson, the parking authority.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We have representatives from the city's bond council, Norton, Rose Fulbright, who will deliver the staff report, and we're happy to answer any questions after. Mr. Haitaiyan, I'm sorry, step in. How do you say your last name?
Haitaiyan.
Thank you. And go ahead, take it away.
Sure. This is a housekeeping matter related to the city's financing authority. The financing authority was formed with two members initially many decades ago. They included the city and at that time, the redevelopment agency. The redevelopment agency, as you know, is. The redevelopment agency, as you know, has been winding down for several years, and there's uh, very few functions left. I believe it has uh, uh, one outstanding function left that it will fulfill next year. So it seemed like a a good opportunity uh, to uh, substitute out successor agency with an entity that's more enduring. Uh, and the um, a convenient entity for that purpose would be the formation of a parking authority. Every city and county has within it a parking authority under, under state statute, and the authority can be activated with a resolution of the city. So what you have before you are a succession of resolutions. Um, each of them is a step along the way to substitute in the parking authority for the successor agency inside of the city's financing authority.
Thanks for that, um, does council have any questions about this item? Do we have any public input on this item tonight? On im- the implementation of a parking authority? That they'll, will bring the matter um, back to council. Um, so just a couple of questions that I've gotten from the public. Um, one, is this um, is this going to be something that the downtown business improvement district will be able to use as a parking authority?
No, uh, we haven't, we hadn't envisioned that particular use. I mean, really, um, what this entails is replacing the successor agency as part of a J P A that the city is part of in order to be able to issue bonds. Um, and the most convenient um, entity that we could form um, to replace the successor agency within that J P A is a parking authority. But it doesn't mean that it, you know, we're gonna, we have plans to issue, you know, bonds for parking or for downtown or for anything like that. Um, Stepan, I don't know if you wanted to add to that, but that's essentially my understanding.
That's correct, this is, this is proposed as just a housekeeping matter. The, the joint powers authority will, will uh, still be led by the city council as its board of directors, and the joint powers authority is a separate entity, so uh, its decisions will be made separately. Um, you can use your parking authority to the extent you want to, but none of that is proposed in this, this uh, agenda item.
So what are some typical, and I'll be done after this, what are some, a couple of typical uses of the parking authority by the city? What do you, what do, what do other cities use the parking authority to do?
Sure, uh, let's see here. Trying to find a comparable list for you. Uh, it it can hold property, it can uh, enter into contracts for the administration of parking facilities. Um, it can operate inside of the city in full, or it could have a limited jurisdiction inside the city such that parking authority handles portions of the city and the city itself handles other portions. Uh, with, let's see, with authorization, it can enter into financing contracts, and that's, it build facilities, um, and I think that's the flavor of it. Essentially, it's a, it's a administrative body intended to facilitate parking pro- projects.
Okay, so most of the projects that it would finance, bonds for, would be parking related?
That's right.
Got it, okay, thank you. There are no other questions, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mendez Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Truhyu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, item two, consideration of a resolution adopting the January twenty twenty-four, June twenty twenty-four budget for the downtown business improvement district in the twenty twenty?
Sorry to interrupt, there, there actually was a succession of four resolutions for that, for that item. I just wanna ensure that we're, city attorney's okay that we've covered all four.
You want to?
Yeah, I think it, I think just because it wasn't clear that we were voting on all four of them, that we should um, take them up, the votes up separately for the, the next three resolutions.
Okay.
So one B, one C, and one D.
Can I make, can you make a motion B, C, and D?
Uh, yes, you can, as long as that's clear.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve item one, B, C, and D.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendez Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Truhyu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, item two is consideration of a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-four budget for the downtown business improvement district and the twenty twenty-four downtown bid operating plan.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. The downtown business improvement district has been diligently working and preparing an operating plan and a budget for your consideration. So with this um, agenda item, we will be voting on both, and I just wanted to be clear on that. And I am inviting bid board member Parminder Singh to give a presentation on their operating plan and their six-month budget.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, councilmembers, Mister City Manager. I was hoping she would just give the presentation. Right. About those forty-niners. Guys do these long meetings. Lots of people. People walk into a bar.
These are really getting slow.
Yeah. All right, well, the bid, thank you, everybody. The bid, Business Improvement District, so our mission, as it says there, is to create a very vibrant and inviting downtown. So the whole goal is to inject a lot of energy, uh, have more people coming down to shop, spend money, and really get the businesses jump-started and just be a part of that and helping Selma become the best it can be, uh, in. So how we're gonna accomplish that is through marketing and visibility using social media to promote, getting community engagement, and having people, uh, business owners, employees and businesses participate and collaborate with us on our social media projects, and then beautification. So, uh, we'll cover more of that, but to enhance the uh, visual appeal of the downtown and make it a great uh, first impression when people come down there. So the first thing which we have now underway, and I would encourage everybody in this room that can hear this, is to start following us on social media, and you'll start seeing some of the businesses being promoted on Instagram, uh, Downtown Selma, and then the same on Facebook as well. And we've started promoting businesses and uh, the people, the operators of those businesses in the bid. So our goal is basically to highlight what, what is going on in the downtown, in the businesses, to make the residents aware, not just our residents, but people around the city of Selma, that they can find these goods and services in the heart of downtown Selma. How we're gonna do that is in community engagement, ha- like I said before, have the businesses, the employees and managers promote theirselves through our social media pa- platform. And then we will also have collaboration with them, uh, we'll have campaigns with them to help boost their visibility and the downtown visibility. Then outreach and follow-up, our plan is to try to get as much engagement, and I'll highlight, like sending out Google forms to see how people will get engaged. It's the hardest thing that, you know, can do, whether it's in city life or businesses, getting people involved and uh, you know, participating. Beautification, what are our plans, uh, streetscapes? So we want to make a few changes, um, I don't know if you've walked up and down, let's say High Street, for example, the benches that were there, they're splintering, I mean, from age, and so we are looking to either enhance those by upgrading them or if we can uh, take care of the material that's already on them. And then landscaping, we'll focus on that as well. Public art installations, maybe installing uh, you know, some new murals to, to beautify the downtown as well. Lighting's one thing we've looked at, and we want to see how we can incorporate that. Uh, since the trees went down, the lighting that was up and down High Street and uh, on Second, uh, it's a lot darker. We'd like to make it more inviting to um, to people, especially if kids, you know, moms and kids are there downtown, especially at the theater, to make it more inviting and just more um, visible for everybody. Signage and wayfinding, so our goal is, we're, we're getting pricing on street signs, so we can have the logo in the bottom right that you see, um, I don't know if we've adopted that final look yet. Okay, so that's our, um, that's how far we've come with that logo. So we would, you know, the goal is maybe put that on the street signs. So when somebody comes into the downtown, they realize they're in a different area, like if anybody's been to uh, Kearney Boulevard. So you can see, you know, when you enter that area, you can, you can tell you're in a different neighborhood. Seasonal decor and themes, uh, just to participate and have a different look and feel uh, through holidays and events. And then facade funding, w- we'll cover some of that uh, when we go to the financing section, that to encourage business owners to apply for grants through the bid, uh, to help beautify their storefronts, whether it's on, you know, awnings, windows, A D accessibility. Uh, and then we would do a matching fund uh, up to a certain number uh, to help beautify the downtown. So with anything like social media, uh, marketing and visibility, how do we measure, you know? It was a hard thing to see what's going on when you put things out there on social media. Uh, so some metrics, these are just what we've set for ourselves. Our goal is to achieve a two hundred percent increase in engagement by the end of twenty twenty-four. So like I said earlier, we would love for everybody to stop following us, you'll get to see and hear everything that's going on in the downtown that we put out there. And then for follower growth, a lofty goal, like to hit two thousand followers, say, on Instagram. We're up to a hundred and thirty. Pink, uh, so two thousand is a very lofty goal, anybody knows follower counts, like the city of Kingsburg has just over three thousand, and they've been doing this a lot longer than we have, so we wanna catch up and sell what we can. We have a much larger population, we just need to participate. And then uh, downtown market analysis is, we want to start tracking businesses, licenses, revenue that comes in, new startups, so we can see uh, if, in fact, if we're at capacity or we have vacancies available to attract more businesses. I would think that if we can get the downtown, I'm going out on a wing here, but uh, the people want to fight to get into the downtown, would be the ideal. Now's the hard part, is ramping up, but we wanna get to the point where people are actually fighting to get a storefront in the downtown district. Community engagement, uh, what are we doing here? Five months, I'm gonna send out probably surveys via, via, via Google forms, so this will be it. And then achieve a ten percent participation rate. Pretty lofty goal in terms of getting people to actually respond. And then the collaborative initiatives is getting every other month, every other month, we are trying to achieve six collaborations partnerships with businesses where we would promote them as a business. And then when we do collaborate, that we would get put on their, you know, Instagram page as well, and try to pick up more followers. Beautification, we talked about that a little bit, um, High Street, Lincoln Park, Veterans Plaza, just trying to add more things that would make the downtown visually pleasing, such as the benches, even upgrading the trash cans uh, to downtown and branded and things like that. I think that leads into the next one, beautification projects, um, facade improvements. The neighboring towns have benefited very highly from those downtown facade grants, and I think that we will too, once they, once business owners find out that the monies are available. Then we're looking for a ten percent participation, that one. Got surveys and quarterly meetings to follow up, nothing there too much. There's the board members and uh, what their terms are when they end. Uh, basically, our goal is to improve the downtown. One more, oh, the money, the buck stops here. We will be coming to you for more money, so please have your purses ready. Um, so how our money is gathered, the twenty twenty-four bid district, the businesses with inside the, the boundaries of the district, uh, approximately twenty-five thousand, that is added tied by their business licenses. And then uh, a generous gift from the city council, fifty thousand dollars, thank you very much. And then uh, the eleven thousand dollar beginning fund balance gives a total of eighty-six thousand. So how are we gonna spend that for this next upcoming six months? Uh, the marketing, social media, we've allocated eighty-five hundred. Then for the beautification, benches, trash cans, branded street signs. Another way that we want to also clean up the downtown district is uh, pressure washing, High Street. That's where we're gonna kind of, you know, roll it out to see, and we've allocated forty-five thousand for that. And then the facade grants, which are the business improvement uh, grant program, we've got twenty-five thousand allocated there. That will be a matching fund up to ten thousand dollars. And a contingency of forty-five hundred dollars.
Sounds good, you guys have been um, really busy, does council have questions or?
Yeah, I have questions. First of all, I wanna really thank you, Parminder, for everything that you're doing, and, and this is, this is great for our downtown, you know, we really need it. And I know I've seen you late at night going downtown, walking around, and we, we have people coming in, you know, we refer them back to you, you send them our way, you know? But that's the thing, is that finding locations for individuals that really wanna, you know, open, say, a sandwich shop or open, we just don't have that, I mean, I hope that we were able to, because now that, you know, we have some new, new stuff coming up. Um, the other thing is, we talked about doing a um, color scheme. Is that still in the works with our downtown so that it can be vibrant, you know? Um, we've talked about that color scheme for, I would say, at least over ten years. And I'm just wondering if that's still a desire to go that route? Because we're looking, you know, we'd like to move forward in painting our building, but.
But that is within the scope of our downtown strategic plan?
Oh, perfect.
And it'll, the contract runs through the end of summer for that, so that's kind of our, I wouldn't say estimated time of arrival, but that's not the right terminology, that's kind of our um, timeline.
Okay. So we're still looking at a color scheme option?
Yes, and that's why we didn't allocate too much to the facade grant, we're trying to, so hopefully people want to replace windows and A D accessibility for the front door and things like that.
Okay.
And, and if I could add to that as well, the, the improvement program, that I think we're calling it Business Improvement Program through the next six months, has specific criteria such as, as uh, Parminder stated, windows, improvements to maybe A D A accessible hardware on their doors, things like that, and it requires a match by property owners so that they have some, you know, um, buy-in on the program. So it's not just funded through, to get more improvements done. So it could be, you know, a five thousand dollar improvement, the bid would put in twenty-five hundred, the business owner. And that's a, that's a prelude to the eventual facade program that we are looking to implement through the guidance in the uh, downtown strategic plan. So we're trying to roll out a program, a grant program, um, kind of as a, as a, um, I'm not gonna say training wheels type of program to the bid, to let them know. Um, kind of as a, as a, um, I'm not gonna say training wheels type of program to the bid to let them know that there are grants available to improve their uh storefronts, but as we get closer to concluding with the the strategic plan, things like facade and design and colors will will be part of that for next year's budget. As Parmenter pointed out, it's a six-month budget, so you know, the bid will be coming to the city council with their uh uh budget proposal for allocation at the same time that we're going through our budget process. So the two will line up and they'll be on a fiscal year, the same as the city. So that was the goal of having a six-month budget.
And then, of course, the other issue is the lighting. You know, definitely the lighting. I mean, it really hurts our downtown. Um, because at one point, our downtown was so beautiful with all the lighting that we had on Second Street and High Street. Um, is there a way that we're going to be able to bring that back sooner um, with the bid? Or is that something that, as council, we have to look at allocating money for during our budget time?
Um, so that's also within the scope of our downtown strategic plan. The they, through their charrette um process, they will identify lighting options for the downtown. And again, that's an end of summer timeline. And then funding opportunities, while the bid might have an opportunity to fund it, I think we can have that conversation when the um lighting has been identified.
Yeah, and and I would add, um, you know, the goal right now is isn't to make huge investments into, you know, lighting fixtures and things like that until we have a clear picture of what the overall theme downtown is gonna be. Um, but our public works department has been looking at different ways um to uh increase the lighting, at least temporarily, until we're able to identify a more solid lighting strategy for downtown. We're testing out different light bulbs. Second Street or uh Tucker Street has some increased visibility through the different light bulbs that we've changed, but we're constantly looking at that through our public work structure.
And it is a high priority for the bid as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, the lighting.
Oh, for the bid as well, okay.
Absolutely. We want to see it well lit, yes.
I have a question. Are you done, Councilwoman Gera?
Oh, I was just gonna ask where the timeline, because it was something that I wanted to bring back to put back on the agenda as priority, and that's, that's the reason I'm asking is because if it's something that um, council needs to put back or bring back on the agenda or a timeline, then that's what I want to do, because I don't think that we should be waiting um, till summertime. I mean, it's something that we need. And we need to really move forward with that, because that's one of the biggest issues and complaints that I get from our citizens. And if we can move forward on that, that's another thing that we really need to do.
In regards, in regards to the bid, um, I have a couple of questions and I have, I concur with your your concern, Councilwoman Gera. Um, meeting with my, one of my uh my new tenant, um, he'll be opening until nine o'clock at night every day, and he's took me into the downtown and he sees that it's really dark and the parking. I think, I think, I think two issues is, one, the parking, all parking in our downtown is a little bit, the lights down, that's one. Um, there is a significant lower lighting in downtown, that's one for sure. Um, but, you know, going back to, uh, Parmenter, I have a couple of questions for you in regards to the bid. I really, 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 just, you know, and I echo the 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 city manager's belief of, you know, short, short strides, but just getting the word out and getting the community and getting everybody together, because this task is gonna be a long dreaded task, because it's got multiple layers in order to be successful. Um, but, you know, one of the, one of the things I have, I have a question is, uh, you know, when we sit here and 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 I'll say it, um, as, as owners of a property in downtown, um, you know, we're investing in the BID, right? We're investing because we want to make sure that we, we want to, number one goal is to, of course, you know, beautify, make it look good, it has to be safe, but at the same time, increase sales tax, right? Because we have to hold accountable, right? So um, when we look at what, what is the BID's? Um, what is the BID thinking? When you, you were talking about, hey, we'd love to have sandwich shops, we'd love to have people, but when we have people, owners of tenants, um, you know, one of their shop leaves, and the first thing they do is they bring another barber shop or salon, you know? And the question I have for the BID is, uh, are you guys also thinking about marketing if there's an open land, an open vacant lot or a vacant building? Um, you know, what, what, what strategic plan do you guys have towards um our marketing for? Are we, are we sharing with other businesses that there's, you know, or a questionnaire is, you know, what would you like, or another coffee shop up in downtown, or? Um, what's the BID's thought towards that?
And within that has come up in the meetings, uh, and so where that goes is, we would tell, basically my understanding, we will let Alicia know at the city and, you know, if somebody's got a vacant building. Of course, we're gonna put out questionnaires to find out the needs and uh what businesses are looking for, and that can go to, I'm guessing, the property owners too. And then we would find out, they would need to send that into the city and say that, hey, we have a vacant building. And uh, it's just a matter of demand. Without doing an actual positive outreach, we haven't looked at yet. Uh, we don't have a, a commercial uh real estate listing type agent that attracts businesses to town. I mean, that could be something that council could look at too, is how do you bring businesses to town?
And. Yeah, that's, but 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 in, but in regards to the BID, the question I have for you is, as a, as a structured body, you know, and and we all own businesses that are downtown, and as we invest into the downtown, are we, are, I guess what I'm asking is, are we as business owners that own property in downtown, thinking that, you know, are, are we wanting to bring in sandwich shops? Are we running, bringing restaurants or somewhere where people can come and, you know, because, I mean, you can, we can beautify all downtown and we can make it look good, and I have what, three buildings there, and you also have buildings there. But the question is, what are we, what are we gonna do to, um, if our thought process is, you know, hey, we're just bringing another flower, another um beauty shop, or, or are we thinking that we're actually wanting all of structuring, the BID is going to actually meet with the city of staff and uh the strategic plan is gonna meet and you're gonna come up with a plan, not only to beautify the downtown, because, I mean, we're gonna, we as city council members, where I'm getting to is, we're gonna have to take a look, good look at it, invest more money, but what are we gonna get in return? A side of the beautification, because one, we're investing money, the community wants a, wants a ready return. So are you guys, are you guys talking in 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 that board meeting and are you guys talking about future investments for um the downtown?
Yes. So, uh, great question. So we are, we've highlighted that we would like to see more retail and food in the downtown. Not more, we have enough salons and things like that. And so now, personally, and that's why I've not leased out the one spot that we have across from Antonio's is looking for some sort of food or retail. Actually, talked with the owner of Plant Slayer in Fresno today and invited her to come visit the downtown and see if she can find a spot where she could open up, which is a totally different thing. It's a vegan shop. So uh Naughty Chicks, um, I think I can openly say it, I have some control on it, uh, that, trying to get them to open in the downtown. So we would have another food vendor, which, I mean, Naughty Chicks are very well-known around here and very popular. And so we are working the plans uh for that, uh, it'd be on the corner of High and Second Street. Uh, to get, the plans have been given to a contractor to look at and try to work up some pricing so we can, you know, pull permits and get that thing pushed forward as well. There will be, yeah.
No, I, 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 I really commend you guys for doing, as, as, I just want to make sure that the BID is having conversations in regards to when there is vacant buildings or some kind of, you know, not only are we just gonna be doing beautifications, but we're also looking at where we're steering our our downtown, because that's, that's probably the, the big, the big push, is just trying to get more traffic and, you know, but I want to reiterate and go back to what Councilwoman Gera stated, uh, we need to look at, if we're not gonna be able to put lighting and wait for the, wait for the budget, uh, we need to get our staff and our, and your, your, the BID and the city um public works directors to work on um lighting the parking lots and lighting the downtown, so if that can happen, then great, but you know, I wish you luck, um, you know, we, we are all here supporting the BID. The BID is the best move I think the city of Selma can do. Um, I think we just need more interreaction. We need the community to get involved and rally behind you guys.
Absolutely.
But aside of that, I think.
Thank you. And we do have that two-pronged approach, is that's why we're highlighting, we want to highlight food and retail as much as we can to attract more of it into the downtown.
And I um, I want to also say thank you to Parmenter. You know, we've been going after our business improvement district for over a decade. We didn't have Parmenter Singh over a decade ago. You were around, but you were taking a much more active role and appreciate that. I appreciate all the bit, all the business owners downtown. Um, I appreciate all the businesses that rent downtown. I appreciate the beauty salons. They, they bring a lot of people in. And you know, a lot of those, those folks who work in the beauty salons, they work late and they work hard, and they work till nine o'clock at night. And it shouldn't be dark for them when they leave. So to me, lighting is, is an aesthetic issue, but it's a safety issue, and I think we need to get our act together as a city and get those lights in, you know, in a, in a two-tier approach is fine. But first, let's get some lighting in so we can, you know, help the, the people who do work downtown, late hours, and the kids who do go to play practice, folk law to go practice and dance practice, um, so we can make it a, a safe downtown. It's great that we have a police station close by. That's a really good selling point, too. Um, but i- it's dark, and I think I see at night, and I see right now, the way city should not look. We are the classic before picture right now. What we need to do is get to the after picture so that we can show this is where we came from, this is where we're going. Downtown speakers, you go downtown Kingsburg, you hear music. You know, you hear good stuff. It's good. It's nice to have that in the background, not intrusive. The lighting is nice to have at night, but it's a safety issue, too. The trees look nice. We definitely need to get trees back, and we pushing for that at the um, at the budget time to get more trees downtown, because we need that. They're going in on Golden State as well. Trees are a good thing. Their roots can be intrusive, but they offer that shade and then, you know, the environment that we have today, they're, they're more useful than ever. So we really need our our trees back as well, and it sounds like they correlate with the lighting as well. What I'm getting to as well is, I've been talking to several of the business owners downtown, and I always talk about the bid. How do you feel about the bid? And some of the folks who've had the business were not for it at first. They just weren't. They said it's another, you know, issue, not gonna go anywhere, and it's just gonna be a waste of time and money. That mentality is still around, but it's changing a little bit. But now it's not that it's not doing anything, but the question is, what are you doing? What are you doing for my business license fees? I mean, it's all very well and good for us to talk about this with public money. And, you know, budget time, but the folks downtown are ground zero when it comes to shelling out money for this business improvement district. You know, it's a business, if you're not regulated by the city, you gotta pay a hundred bucks. If you are regulated by the city, you gotta pay an amount equal to your business license. So it's, it's, it's an investment that you could be putting somewhere else. And I think folks are very, very generous and very nice around here and very cool with each other, but they're gonna want to see results. And I think, you know, you're in that six-month window right now, and I love seeing this um, this budget here, because you have a chance to do something impactful. And we have a chance to be supportive of that, and I think, you know, you can count on our support as a city council to go for the business improvement district and to follow your lead as the business improvement district and to make this happen, because that's the only way we're gonna work in Selma. It's not gonna be some top-down thing, some theory, some college degree. It's gonna be us. It's gonna be the people who decide what we need in our town and implement it and decide whether it's successful or not, because you can formulate all the plans you want. If the people don't buy in, you got nothing, and that's what we need now.
That's why, so we're so encouraged. Uh, uh, I think that all the members that you've appointed to the bid are lockstep. I mean, they are all one hundred percent motivated and actively looking at ways, and we're brainstorming a lot, trying to, you know, get things accomplished, and that was our first thing. Now we're finally in motion, and that's why we wanted to put out the facade grant. And so we can actively pitch to business owners, hey, there's money available. We're cycling that money right back to you. And uh, while we're promoting businesses as well at the same time.
People see those facades get cleaned up, that's gonna be something just like that, right in front of people's eyes, that they're gonna be able to see an improvement on.
We do have a lot of help from staff, Alicia, Jerome, Fernando, and so we, we are very blessed that we've got a good team. And we've got good support, and you guys have got our back. And so I think good things are coming. Uh, we had a conversation, you know, I've spoken with you, I've spoken with John as well. Uh, a couple of years ago, you kind of feel it in your gut. I think it's coming for Selma. The next couple of years will make, you know, there's a lot of improvements going on, and there's very positive signs of what's to come. The best is yet to come yet.
Great poem. Anybody else? Anybody online? Anybody in the public like to say anything?
I wanted to say something.
Oh, council member.
Um, great presentation. I'm really excited. You know, you mentioned, you know, the, the advisory board. Great people, um, they care about Selma. I know that there's a lot of big things that are coming, um. You know, I'm part of, um, you know, church here in town and and I'm very active in, in our church, and there's a lot of big things that are coming to our church, and so it's gonna bring a lot of people from out of town. Um, actually, the whole um Fresno Diocese area. And so it's really exciting that this is all happening, because they're gonna be driving downtown, right? So I'm really excited. Um, yes, it is a little bit dark. I did drive down there. Um, I think it was on Sunday, I think it was, and there, the lighting is um pretty, you know, bad. Um, but, you know, whatever we can do as far as, you know, up upgrading the lights that are there now to make them brighter, I think, um, because I, I get it, we want a theme, right? So, so that that way we don't spend money on a temporary, and then you're gonna have to turn around and change that out. So um, I'm really looking forward to what um the downtown's gonna look like, so I'm excited.
Any members from the public have any comment they'd like to make?
Rose Robertson. So, um, being here at every council meeting, three years ago, sixty thousand dollars was allocated for speakers, and of course, that never happened downtown. Maybe you could use some of that money to put cafe lights on all the buildings. I'm sure um the business owners will be fine with that, just to bring some um magical light back again, and um not only will you be able to do uh High Street, you'll be able to do Second Street, you'll be able to do Front Street, all the way down to um uh Second Street towards the freeway where it looks really bad. But anyway, you could put those cafe lights, that wouldn't be um anything that we would have to take out and redo. Cafe lights go anywhere and everywhere. So if anything changes, there'll be a way to save those cafe lights, which the ones on High Street should have been saved along with the wiring. Um, now that the, we don't have the trees, we probably wouldn't need that wiring, but just wrapped around the poles or um, just be creative. We have to be creative to bring that magical lighting back and to different streets, but um, I'm, I'm, I'm positive that sixty thousand dollars was um allocated for speakers and, and never happened. Look into that, maybe get some cafe lights back. And maybe the challenge for two thousand people for the bid, once you give the citizens something, something really nice, lighting, to start that off, I'll guarantee you'll get your two thousand people that'll give it a like, because you're showing that you're serious and we're gonna do something together, and it would be a bright idea. Thank you.
Any else have a comment at this time? Do we have anybody online? Jim, come on in.
Jim, I have a little seventeen oh one dinuba. Uh, the presentation was very good by the gentleman here, by the staff. Um, but there is an issue you have to address uh on this downtown area that's, that I noticed. It's uh, it's getting, how would I say it? Not good, but the downtown area. We have, we're developing more homeless in the parks. Uh, and that's not good. If you're gonna improve and you have those issues with the homeless uh walking the streets in the daytime and night, um and these beauty shops are open late, they don't, the customers are not gonna feel safe when they see a homeless person. Uh, there's a criteria there. Uh, uh, as a parent, would you bring your kid downtown, you see a homeless person around, you don't know what kind of person, you don't know if he's a sex offender, you don't know what he is, so uh and I'm, I'm not blaming the law enforcement or anything like that, but there's an issue that we, as a council and as a community of the city of Selma, we're gonna have to address this issue. Uh, I mean, all, all cities are facing this. And this is hurting businesses and especially in the, look at the downtown Bay Area and San Francisco. That's a good example. Uh, we don't want this to happen here, guys. So I think uh let's change our priorities a little bit, you know, address these issues. So I think let's change our priorities a little bit, you know, address these issues. And then, and on his presentation on the downtown area, I would modify it a little bit. I have plans and vision myself, but it was good. Don't get me wrong. But I just came to address that issue as far as your homeless issue because I see it, that particular group, I dealt with that group, so, in an area. So I see them over here. So I thank you guys.
Anybody else? Come on up.
I just wanted to say that.
Your name, sir? Your name again, sir?
Santiago Seguera.
For the record, thank you.
The thing about the lighting is very important, too, because, you know, the art center is very successful with adult plays, kids plays, teen plays. And we attend all the time because my son and our granddaughter, they're part of the group that helps and performs. And sometimes when you get out of there, it's already dark. I mean, really dark. I mean, it's scary for adults. Can you imagine for the kids that have to walk to their car or sometimes they walk home? And another thing, too, is a big majority, because there was a study done, a big majority of the people coming to Selma to see those plays are from out of town. And they come into Selma and they look at the, you know, it's like, you know, what's going on? We really need to work on those lights, make it safer, especially for the kids. You know, I know the shops and everything is important, but at least, you know, there are adults, they can provide some sort of self-defense, but you got these kids, you know, some of them are little kids, you know, or teens. Jim was saying, you know, with the homeless problem, I mean, I believe in helping the homeless, but we got to make sure the kids are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a riff on that, that was, you know, I went to work a couple of days ago and I go in the door and there's a homeless person sleeping right in front of our door. And I mean, I just said, this is a place of business. You know, there's a map center over there. And what's become of Selma? I mean, having four homeless people sleeping in doorways. What next? Crime? And it's not good for the people themselves. We're better than that. We need to come up with solutions on that. Anybody else input? Anybody online? Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve the six-month budget and the 2024 downtown bid operating plan?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, everybody good with a five-minute break? We've been at it for a while now. Then we'll come back at 8:08. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The community is probably mostly aware by this point about the omission of the garbage collection fees in November's property tax bill that you received in November. And this item is to, first of all, explain what happened and secondly, to explain how it was corrected and to help clarify any questions. We also have our finance manager, Jacob Delcide, here to help answer any questions that follow. But, you know, in general, the refuse rate charges were omitted from the property tax bills because of a mostly clerical and miscommunication error, which the city of Selma and the finance department fully take responsibility of. And as soon as we were made aware of it, we reached out to the Fresno County Tax Collector's Office to figure out, you know, first of all, how it happened and secondly, what we needed to do to correct the issue. And so as, you know, in November, as soon as we became aware, we started working with Fresno County. And they started putting together a roll correction, which is essentially sending out new bills to Selma residents that included the correct refuse rates. And it wasn't just our garbage fees, it was also a few CFD, Community Facilities District that was omitted, which was a much smaller charge for a very limited number of residents. But we've been working with them. They sent out adjusted bills on December 18th of 2023. With, there was a short explanation with those new bills as to what happened and why they were receiving a new bill. So essentially, for people, there's some people who, you know, pay their bill in full as soon as they get it. And, you know, whatever is on the bill, that's what's accepted by Fresno County. Fresno County changed their process a little bit to not take those payments right away and instead directed them to wait for the new bills that did include the refuse charges. Of course, some people paid and the county wasn't able to, you know, refuse those payments. So those were collected and it created some additional work for the county and for the city. But in general, where we stand right now is that the full amount of the refuse rates, instead of being spread out over two tax bills over the tax year, the full amount is being reflected in the second installment of the property taxes. And so I know a lot of folks who received the bills were confused about, you know, why, you know, the amount was larger, you know, for the second installment, et cetera. But the due date for the second installment, which includes the refuse rate, is April 10th, 2024. And so obviously, this is different from the typical billing process because it's not split evenly, the refuse rate isn't split evenly between the two installments. So again, we extend our apologies for the inconvenience. It's a clerical error that will not happen again. And we've updated our policies and procedures to make sure that that is, you know, we've got two and three people looking at things before they go out. But at the end of the day, it is something that we were able to correct. There's, it's going to be a little bit longer lead time before we're able to collect the full amount of the refuse rate charges. But at the end of the day, the city will be made whole. The biggest concern, I think, was the inconvenience to the community, which I know it was pretty significant. And we've been answering a lot of questions and people have been coming in to ask about, you know, why they're receiving, you know, different amounts. And we've been explaining, the staff has been available to explain what the charges mean and until when they have to pay the full amount. So at this point, we're happy to answer any questions and address any concerns.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the finance department manager, city manager?
I might do. Let me ask you. Okay, so when the individual came in, how did you explain it to them, especially if they have like an escrow account, impound account with their, with, you know, they pay their taxes, mortgage and their insurance all in one payment? So how did you clarify that?
Oh, to adjust the, if they made it all in one payment, the county to let us know that if they would begin another bill sent separately aside from that, and the only amount that they would have to pay is just the refuse rate, which ranges from 439, dependent on the senior rate, and then for everybody else. In regards to the mortgage, it's dependent on whether or not the mortgage company got the bill directly from the county, because I know some people get it, the mortgage company requests the bill directly. And so they needed to speak with their mortgage company in regards to that in order to pay that.
Okay. So then the county did send a separate bill to the lender, to the mortgage company? Or are they getting a separate bill just to the citizen?
They sent a separate bill to everybody, mortgage and citizens. And they sent those out the 18th of December is what they did.
Okay. So possibly they'll have enough in escrow to be able to cover that. And if they don't, did you find out what happens when they don't have enough in their escrow account?
I didn't speak to any mortgage companies directly, but I can find out and I can definitely.
No, I do that every day. I specialize in that.
But I'm not sure. I didn't speak to them.
Yeah. And that's why I'm asking, is because to get a clear explanation is what's going to happen is the mortgage is going to state they don't have enough in their escrow account. So they will send a letter to them explaining that because you have an option to pay this certain amount or your mortgage payment is going to increase by X amount of dollars. So a lot of time that really freaks out the customer or the owner of the property because they don't want their bill to go up, their mortgage payment to go up. So they get this letter and they have an option. You can pay that so that way your mortgage payment doesn't go up. But what's going to hit is it's going to hit during April where people do have, some people pay, you know, property taxes or some people pay other things. That's where it might hurt because some people say, I don't want to pay this extra mortgage payment or I don't have enough in my escrow account to pay it. And they have to pay it out of pocket. So that's what you're going to run into.
Yeah. So, yeah, and I think we can encourage people to pay the additional amount directly. I mean, they would have paid it anyway, right? In the first installment. And so we always encourage them to pay directly so that it doesn't affect their escrow account.
One thing I would encourage the city to do in the future, and I've heard this from many, many residents, is get out in front of this. Send something out to each citizen so that they can get a hold of their mortgagee and let them know, hey, you know, you're going to be billing me a little bit less this time in my impound account because, you know, the city didn't include the trash assessment bill on my tax roll this time. Just so the citizens know, that's the one thing citizens have been saying is more transparency on the issue. And I think if there are any issues that come up like this in the future, as a city, we should be getting out on it a little bit more ahead of time and publicizing it more because there's still people that don't know about it. And I'm getting contacted. I think all the council members are or will be, and these supplementals are confusing people. Point two, from a city perspective, yeah, after this happened, I talked to, I talked to our tax collector, Oscar Garcia, and there were some options. The city weighed the options in terms of whether or not billing the city as the city itself or going through Fresno County. And Fresno County stepped up and said, you know, hey, we'll do a supplemental. They didn't do it for free. They didn't do it for free. So my question to the ci- So my question to the city is, how much did this cost the city to have that supplemental issued by Fresno County?
Yeah, no, great question. We don't have an exact amount right now. The estimate at the beginning of the process was in the neighborhood of $50,000. So the estimate for what the, the county was going to charge the city to do the rebuild was in the neighborhood of $50,000. And so we expect that to be roughly the amount. It was based on a fee per parcel. And that fee was based on the number of parcels. So once we have that final number in the invoice from the county, we'll make sure that the, that the council is aware of it.
And the, let's make it clear to the citizens who are here, I understand your concern. You're not being billed directly for this, correct? The $50,000.
Oh, no, 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 yeah.
There not going to be a special assessment for the citizens?
Yeah, no, that's, thank you for clarifying. That charge is not going to be borne by the individual ratepayers as part of, you know, their, their garbage collection fees. That's going to be borne by the city itself.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And just to, just to go over this again, in terms of the failsafe on this, it sounds like the county has changed their procedures for getting this information and the city is, is attuned to that. Has this generated a review in the Finance Department of other data that the city sends out that is sensitive like this, that affects what the ratepayers pay? Has there been a departmental review of that?
Yeah, and we're in the process of that. And, you know, we're constantly reviewing our policies. And that particular instance happened at a time where we lost a department head. And so it was a matter of the person who normally would have double-checked that did not. And, and so it was a missing piece. But at the end of the day, we have to make sure that when there are missing pieces that we're able to replace that with, with more oversight. So, but yeah, to your question, Mayor, there are other instances where residents are affected, could potentially be affected by miscommunication or clerical errors, and we're looking at all of those.
Any, any, any questions or comments? Please come on.
Beverly Barone, 2003 Alton Street. I did come into the office and I spoke with these two gentlemen about that bill. And it was like, in my mind, it was like, okay, this is a city. All of the members, community, we are expecting the city to operate cohesively so that stuff like this doesn't take place. I don't know what happened. I mean, you kind of mentioned somewhat, but at that point in time, there's still that responsibility that we need to take care of this, these issues. So in my mind, I told him and I told him, you know what? This was not our fault and I know we all make mistakes. But, and it is a charge that should come to the citizens. But at the same time, it's like, okay, it was not our mistake. Why can't you take half of that bill of that trash assessment and let the city pay for it? Because it was not our mistake. We, we have to pay our part. But the mistake was made on your behalf. And so in my, my mind, I'm thinking, why not go to the general fund and pay half of that assessment that we were not charged for at the time? Thank you.
Jennifer Guerra. In addition to that, $50,000, it's, it may not come out, it does come from us. We, we pay our taxes, so it does come from us. And thank goodness I looked at it because had I not looked at it, and as a matter of fact, I still haven't received my, my bill, the correct bill that I need to pay. Double-check it, triple-check it. As stated, you need to work together to make sure this does not happen again. This cannot happen again because fortunately for me, I am able to pay this amount, but there are other people that are not. They are thinking, okay, well, oh, I have this money. So, you know, I'm going to use it to this or that bill. But now what are they going to do? And I've heard it from my neighbors too. They're, they're not too happy.
Just to, just to comment on that, Ms. Barone's comment of the city paying it, it'll come out of your pocket anyway as a taxpayer, right? I mean, just an hour later. So it doesn't really help for the city to, to, to pay that. But, you know, I think your point's well taken on making sure that this doesn't happen again. I think that's why we're meeting tonight. And I think that's why the city manager and the city council bravely put this on the agenda. And you bravely came out and spoke up at a meeting like this late at night. Appreciate that. So that we can all work together. And we, and we don't have things like this happen because this is the basic of the city that we, that we expect taxpayers, we've got to have this, this right. It gets overlooked, but these are the things that, you know, we really, we really need, along with the, with the, with the trash pickup. We have another person who'd like to make a comment. Please, sir.
Michael Barone at 2003 Alton. The scope of this error is over 5,000 individual property owners that were affected. Not just one or two, that's over 5,000, that's almost the whole city. Also, we're paying the $50,000 in fees more above that to cover that, that error. And I feel that, you know, check, double-check and make sure, because this is sensitive stuff because there's people that have fixed incomes and that's it, that's all they have. Or look how much of an error caused in the mortgage payments and everything else because the people don't have that amount of money. So I think it's something that within this, within the Finance Department, there should be a double-checking or two persons or three persons. Maybe that one person that is in charge of doing that, he forgets or something happens. But as always say, hey, all this paperwork has to be turned in by a certain time. And you double-check, you check with other people to make sure that it's being completed. Because it's a big, you know, like I said, everybody makes mistakes, but there'll be a less of a chance of a mistake being made if there's somebody covering somebody else in what they're doing. So that's what I would say. And, and, you know, that's quite a bit of an error where like 5,000 people were affected, property owners. And there are just only a few here that, you know, were saying something. But, and the cost, $50,000. We put $50,000 in improvement or beautifying the city, okay. But what about us? Another $50,000 that was, you know, spent on an error that was made. So that's, I just want to keep that in record that something, a safety program needs to be within that, especially in these payments, a safety program has to be implemented too. So something like this would not happen again.
And I think it's a good lesson to be on good terms with the county, to stay on good terms and to stay in contact. Because county kind of did us a solid. They could have charged us $100,000. They started there and they, and they took it down because they wanted, they wanted to help us. They wanted to help us as a city. So that, I think that's a good object lesson too.
Rose, Rose Robertson. So I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. Is it fair to say that the trash hauler is our biggest vendor for the City of Selma? $2 million maybe? So let's just say $2 million because of, you know, 5,000 people that are paying. The city paid Waste Management $2 million. So the city administration left out code 6955 on the tax roll to have it impound and go through the whole process so it'll go with the mortgage. They forgot. Obviously, they forgot. So now there's going to be a domino effect, whether people have their houses paid off or not. Yes, we do have to pay that bill on the impound. But when it's impound, it's going to cause a great effect. So my question is, you know, we're trying to find money to try to pay this. Why don't you guys use, especially the three of you council members that are always allocating money to investigate the mayor because he wants to be transparent with the citizens of Selma? Why don't you use that money to help allocate these, these bills of the mistake you guys made? And enough with the investigation. What a waste of money. Thank you.
And there were three people, there were a couple of people that are actually here tonight. I talked to a couple and they have three properties. And so, you know, they have to come up with a pretty big amount on their, on their supplemental. And that is, that's really regrettable, especially when times are tough like those, inflation.
Hello, I'm Lorna Benport. So I own two properties, two homes here in Selma. So yes, I will be affected double that. And I never received any type of letter. So not one, the first or the second one. So if I'd have been coming to these meetings, I wouldn't have known none of this was happening until my mortgage company would send me the letter saying, hey, your mortgage is going up because you didn't have enough money in your impound account. So how do I get those letters? How do I know how much I'm paying? How do I know how much it's affecting me with both homes? Because again, I still have not received any of those letters with any information.
Sure, if you call the city.
Yeah, if you call or come into City Hall, we can give you a breakdown of the charges.
For each home?
Mm-hmm, yep. Yes.
Come on up, sir.
Santiago Segarra, and this is going to be my last comment, I promise. You know, I don't want to be funny or sound dumb or whatever. But like my kids tell me, Dad, you only had one job, really? You're costing all these people, like, you know, they're on social security, whatever. They're not going to have the money to pay them what? Then what are you going to say? Oh, well, too bad, I made a mistake, sorry. Hey, well, by the way, I'm paying another $50,000 because it costs us because we made the mistake. You know, you want everybody to be accountable. Well, who's in charge of that department? Shouldn't they be accountable? You know, sitting there and telling the citizens, well, we're sorry. Well, yeah, you're sorry. But at the cost of what? Not asking, well, some of you guys that own homes, whatever, you guys are paying too. But mistakes that should not happen. $50,000, really? And what happens if we were to say, well, we're going to want $100,000, you got to pay? You would have paid $100,000? Then what? Do you see where I'm going? When there's a department that their job, their only job is to make sure that the accounting is done right, then they should do it right. If I make a mistake and I don't send my payment to the mortgage company, they're going to come after me. There's going to be no, well, sorry, you know. They don't take sorry for an excuse. They want their money, they want it now. Now they start taking action against you. But it seems like there's no accountability for their mistake. It's just, well, we're sorry. Well, you're sorry. And what? Next time we come, you're going to be sorry for something else? That's why you guys were elected, not to be sorry, but to say, you know what? We're taking care of you, all you back here, everybody. Not just whoever made the mistake. I said, well, you know, he's sorry or they're sorry. That's not your job. Your job is to protect us and the city, of course. But because we're citizens and taxpayers, your number one priority is protecting ours and make sure we're taken care of. Thank you.
Ella Ramirez, I also have more than one home. And I didn't get a notice as well, not from the city. The way I found out is I got a notice from the Fresno County. And I called them and they told me that it was an error done by the city, the City of Selma. So I got more information and I found out that this had been done. And it's going to cost me. And like this lady said, I'm able to pay it, but there's some people out there that, that can't. Now, you guys said that there's $50,000 that we don't have to pay. Where is that going to come from? Who's going to pay that? That money that we have to pay for that error could have been used for something else in the City of Selma. We need a lot of things here. But that's just a waste of money. Who are the three reviewers that the ball was dropped? Who reviewed this? Please answer me. What we need is an auditor. What we need is a financial director. Because right now, money's going here, money's going there, and it's not being accountable for. We don't know as citizens, as taxpayers for the City of Selma. I didn't know. I, I didn't know, you know, where is this money going? And I would really want to know. So, you know, I just hope that you guys, this is, this is big. This is really big. I've lived here all my life and it's sad. I've never seen this, this bad, really. So I just hope that we can all come together and do what we have to do to, I know we can correct this, but learn from it, learn from it. And that's, that's all I have to say pretty much. Thank you.
Very much, Ms. Ramirez. You already, one time, no, just one time. No double jeopardy, sorry. Anybody else? Anybody online on the phone? Council have any comments? Okay. Council member, Treheal? No? Okay. Got it. I'm just bringing this back before we, before we move on. I, I know I apologize to the community for this. First time I've ever seen this happen. There, but it happened. Let's move on. Let's make it better. Let's make our town stronger as a result. Not point fingers, it's not what we do here in Selma. We move on and we make things better. This, you know, this, this, there are a lot of lessons to be learned about this, from this. Transparency, having a fully staffed department. I mean, I go to my SKF meetings and they're crying out for people. They don't have people. They got their assessment on the property tax rolls with just a few people. And they need more. So we, you know, the citizens I'm hearing out there are saying, we don't want to hear your excuses, we just want to hear what you're going to do to make sure it doesn't happen again. And I think that's where we need to go with this to make our city even better as a, as a result of this. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is a Salazar Center and Senior Center facilities update.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and council members again. This is just a quick update on the progress of the two centers that are down. As you guys can see in the staff report, I, when I first was brought on here at the City of Selma, I started to do inspections on our, all of our facilities that fall under my department. And one of the things that I noticed pretty quickly was as I visited the Salazar Center, when I went into the Salazar Center, it was apparent that there had been years and years of deferred maintenance on that building. So what I did is I, I reached out to our Public Works Director at the time and our Fire Marshal, and we did some inspections. So listed there are some of the major things that we found in the Salazar Center as we did those inspections. It was apparent from the beginning that we would need to move the Boys and Girls Club out of that facility due to safety concerns. Unfortunately, as you are aware, within a few months of moving them to the, the senior center, then a tree fell on the building and we had to move them again. So I joke with Ruby at the Boys and Girls Club and tell her that she needs to not have any more trees fall on our buildings because I think the problems are following her. Just kidding, Ruby. All right, so what we're working on with the Salazar Center, as you guys can see, is Public Works has done a fantastic job at repairing the minor issues that we were able, that they were able to do. However, some of the repairs require significant work that would need to be contracted out. So we've been working with various contractors to acquire exactly what needs to be done. And right now, we are in the process of reviewing the final RFP that is set to be released sometime on or around January 22nd. Once that is done, we will be closing the bid February and we hope to begin construction in the March timeframe. We anticipate construction for that building to take about two to three months, obviously given weather and other things. So our goal is to be back into that facility at the beginning of summer. However, I do want to make sure everybody knows that the Boys and Girls Club has continued to operate during this time. Even once they had to vacate the, the senior center, we moved them over to the Weed and Seed Building. So they have been in full operations. They've done a fantastic job of, of adapting, just as, as our department has to this. So I'm pleased that the operations were impacted very minimally. They were only shut down a few, a few short days while they moved to different facilities, but they are still in full operation and hopefully will be back as school ends in June. So that is our plan for, for that one. In addition to that, for the senior center, as you guys know, the tree fell and it was a very sad day. Unfortunately, as with a lot of projects at this scope, it's not as easy as it seems. So we did have to work with our insurance company, FEMA. There were a lot of outside agencies that were involved in getting this project moved forward. I'm very pleased and I thank Janie for her work on the insurance side of things. Sylvia and Public Works with their FEMA assistance. But we did get all of the projects approved and there will be, there is likely to be no impact to the general fund for this project. We have moved forward. I'm also pleased to say and thank you to the Planning Department. We have received the building plans for that project. They are currently within our hands and we're reviewing. Rod Garcia is reviewing that for us as, at this. Uh, Rod Garcia is reviewing that for us as at this current time, and we anticipate hit the turnaround to be pretty quickly. Um, so um, with that being said, we we plan to open that R F P right around the same time that Salazar Center is opening, so those projects will be going simultaneously. Um, and unfortunately, because that project did involve the structural um, integrity of the building, we do anticipate that project taking anywhere from three to five months for completion. Um, obviously, we're hoping for three months, but um, again, weather and and just other issues um, could arise. So again, Salazar Center, um, we will have a budget um, for the fiscal impact to the city. Um, hopefully, um, within the next few council meetings, once we finalize the the final scope of work. Um, and and we're working on adding that to our C I P program and identifying the funding for that. And for the Senior Center, we expect no impact to the general fund, um, I'm open to any questions at this time.
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
Just quickly, you mentioned, you mentioned insurance for the Senior Center.
Correct, yes.
Okay, what about insurance for the um, Boys and Girls Club? Did the, does that?
As far as the Salazar Center?
Right, Salazar Center.
Yeah. The issue with the Salazar Center was um, an issue of deferred maintenance, the building hadn't been kept up um, properly over the years, and so it was um, insurance won't cover deferred maintenance or, you know, just wear and tear and 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 those kinds of things. Um, obviously, if if a, an event like, you know, a flooding or a storm, you know, that would have been covered by insurance, but this is mostly an issue of a lack of maintenance.
Okay, but you still haven't received an amount of what it's gonna cost the Salazar Center?
Um, we are working on the scope, so we should have that within the next week or two.
So this is going to impact the general fund?
This will impact the general fund, yes, ma'am.
Not necessarily, I mean, there's, there's different um, funding sources that that we might be able to access. Um, you know, general fund is certainly an option, um, you know, the the council allocated um, ARPA funds um, to park projects um, that haven't been fully spent yet. So um, while general fund uh, uh, is definitely a possibility, there's other ways that we can pay for the, for that, um, for these projects.
Questions?
Good, thank you.
So, just to get it, get it down, so we're looking at the Boys and Girls, cause I get asked all the time, Boys and Girls Club back by June. Okay, and then, I don't think Boys and Girls Club is the only organization that uses the Salazar Center. Are there some food, there's a food giveaway out there too, what are they doing?
Not anymore, uh, um, Telmacom used to uh, utilize that facility, they have since acquired their own facility.
Oh, they're at the old ninety-nine bar on Woodson, got it, okay.
Yeah, but a- as of now, Boys and Girls Club is the only outside agency that utilizes it.
Is that um, cooking equipment gonna be continued there?
Well, it's, it's been inspected, it it's fully operational, um, and so there's no plans to remove it at this point. But um, you know, there can always be upgrades that can be made to it.
Sounds like that's a major sticking point, I know with restaurants, you know, that automatic fire suppressant system is, those requirements are pretty hardcore all the time, and it's restaurant quality, right, restaurant grade.
Yeah, for, as far as I'm aware, there aren't really much issues with with that system. It's more the structural and the overall facility, the roof is is in need of major repairs.
But the mural has made it through and it's continuing, it won't be going anywhere, that's a good sign.
I have a question.
Councilmember?
Amy, uh, yeah, I have a question for Amy, Amy, um, in regards to the Salazar Center and the Senior Center. As we uh, you know, as you, as you guys are getting the um, the appraisal, I guess, or you guys can open up for bid. Have we done an um, a walkthrough and actually look at, you know, uh, what the potential um, cost will be for the next five, ten years on both those buildings? Because, you know, and my own, my opinion is that, you know, as we, as we set budgets and we look at for the near future, you know, as we start thinking about what, you know, the, the Senior Center maybe is outgrown, the the seniors, you know, we need to start looking at maybe potential, what the actual cost factor is gonna be for the next five to ten years and take that into account. So when we start viewing and maybe building a brand new one, and then uh, the Salazar Center also is gonna start looking like it's gonna be um, probably, you know, it's not gonna be big enough. So are you guys looking at that and are you guys taking that into consideration? Because, I mean, I think it's, it's time that we start actually looking at all our buildings and actually taking a ten, five to ten year approach, you know, so we can start managing and doing some, some uh, cost factors, we can make sure when we do budgets, we already know what we're looking at, future investments.
Absolutely, so one of the things that I think City Manager has has, you know, really kind of um, encouraged us as department heads is to really look at our C I P and truly identify what our future looks like.
Capital, capital, capital improvement plan?
Capital Improvement Program, yes, so um, a- and and it's important for us because the Salazar Center, let's be honest, it didn't get this way overnight. It was years of deferred maintenance that did not happen. So um, one of the things um, that is incredibly important to me is the fiscal responsibility that we have to anticipate those costs into the future. Um, deferred maintenance, you know, every, uh, don't get me wrong, I I'm, I'm obviously a parks person. I want all the bright, new, shiny, beautiful parks that we can possibly have, but I can't ignore the fact that we do have some facilities that are in need of upgrades and work into the future. So deferred maintenance is definitely something that we've been looking into um, as department heads across the board to ensure that we can make better decisions into the future, so that we don't end up in situations like this where we have a facility that um, has just been neglected. So absolutely, that is all part of the conversations that are happening.
And I really appreciate deferred maintenance is the reason why we're at, but at the same time, on our side of the view, on our side, uh, we, we, we should be evaluating deferred maintenance for five to ten to twenty years and saying, is deferred maintenance the way to go, or is it just to rehab and buil- build a new, brand new building, right? And so, when I bring this, when I bring these, these questions up, uh, that's why I'm bringing it up, because when we go to, when we get to budget and we start thinking about a five to ten year plan, um, we take into account the the, the amount of deferred maintenance that it's gonna cost. And we start talking about maybe uh, evaluating the structure, um, maybe we gotta, we have to build a new one, start budgeting, right? So that's the reason why I'm asking if you guys are in tail and you guys could probably share that with us when, in the near future, so we can start thinking about what's the future plan for, for Selma.
Sure, uh, Councilman Treheal, absolutely, uh, to to add, and to your point, um, you know, that facility, one of the reasons it's taking, taken us this long to to get an R F P out is because we, you know, we could have put some, you know, Band-Aid fixes on it, um, and and reopened it. Uh, but, you know, to your point, we would have had to, you know, address the same issues all over again within a couple of years. And so, um, what we're looking to do is make sure that that building itself lasts us for a long time. And and so that's gonna require some really extensive repairs and investment by the council, by the city um, to make sure that we don't have to rebuild that facility for a long time. Um, and and if we're smart about how we're rehabbing that facility, um, there's no reason why we can't enjoy the use of that building for a long time, referring to the Salazar Center and and the Senior Center as well. Um, but, you know, at the end of the day, um, we've got um, a good um, Public Works Director that has looked at the building. We've taken several walkthroughs, I myself have walked through that building several times and we've identified things that we can do. And we've got, we've had contractors and and building inspectors and structural engineers look at those buildings. And so now, we're at a point where with the fixes that we've identified, we feel comfortable that that, those facilities are gonna last for a long time, but um, there's other facilities that also need the same kind of treatment.
Yeah, that's a trade-off, isn't it, I mean, you know, repair or rebuild, city's had a C I P. And be great to have a community center, we've been looking at that as long as we've been looking at the Business Improvement District. So I I completely agree, um, at the same time, this is Selma and we need to get these facilities open so our, our kids can use them. And we don't have a lot of choice in terms of the facilities, we don't have a lot of money in terms of budget, I mean, look at all the budget overruns we're having this year. And, you know, this is, it's great that we're coming up with creative ways as a city to pay for these um, long-term repairs, but we always have to keep an eye on the budget, look at the animal shelter. And we built that out there on Tall Waters premises, we built that two thousand thirteen with citizen donations. You know, it was just something we we put together, the, based on what City Council had done previously. Cause we had to get something going, we had to do it, was it the most deluxe animal shelter from Globus like Ms. Winkles? No, but it, it worked, it got the job done. And uh, on the west side, our kids need a place to play, they need a place to go after school, that's critical, like the lighting downtown, you know, perfect is the enemy of good. And we can sta- spend all our time planning and coming up with these um, you know, long-term solutions when what we really need is to see what was indirectly in front of us, which is what we need now and tier that approach and of course, take care of the future. Uh, but we can't avoid the immediacy either, and I appreciate the timelines on this, that's gonna be really helpful. And the inevitable people ask, the seniors, they're, they're also being taken care of right now as well, right? Where, where are they going for?
They are at Pioneer Village.
Pioneer Village, okay.
Absolutely, yes, lunch is still served Monday through Friday, there's bingo, um, we can't do obviously as much, um, but again, I ca- I, I can't speak to the professionalism of my team and their ability to adapt um, and get us through these times, so they've done a great job.
Thanks very much. Anybody else? Okay, that is a discussion item, so we'll move on to our first reading of an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter Two of the Selma Municipal Code pertaining to the Selma Personnel System.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, what you have before you is a draft Personnel Rules and Regulations. There, the current uh, Personnel Rules that we have was actually adopted back in August of nineteen eighty-two. And it's typically updated every two, I'm sorry, every three to five years. So what city staff determined is that instead of trying to update our current policy, we actually just did a quick um, thorough uh, overhaul. We did not even look at what we currently had, we just started from scratch. And we made sure that all of the rules and regulations for state and federal labor laws were incorporated into the draft Personnel Rules and Regulations Before You. All of the bargaining units have been presented, the draft rules, and they do have up until January twenty-second to provide any type of comments, edits, that type of thing. We have six bargaining units. We have six bargaining units and two of them have provided not necessarily edits, but they provided um, a thank you for, this is about time, that's what the emails were. Thank you, this is about time we had something updated that can be useful for the city. In order to adopt the Personnel Rules and Regulations, there would have to be an amendment to our current Selma Municipal Code. Because right now, the Selma Municipal Code, Title Two, Chapter Two, has all of the elements that are included in our updated Personnel Rules and Regulations. So in order to adopt the Personnel Rules and Regulations which are before you, we would have to make an amendment to the current municipal code. There is a recommendation for the verbiage and also the deletion of what is currently there. And I apologize, losing my, losing oxygen here. And right now, this would be, cause there's a change to the municipal code, that means this would be the first, um, because it's an ordinance, there would be the first reading. So we're requesting to waive the first reading and move to the second.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Council, have any questions for Ms. Benegas? Director Benegas, do we have, um, has council looked at this, has H R, has this been referred to the legal counsel for the city's H R, or our, in our city attorney?
I have reviewed it, yes.
Is this something that needs to be put in front of the H R Council? Or is this something, this is a service that your law, you and your law firm provide? There's, this is not a specialty that has to go to a specialist?
I mean, I can't speak to whether Janie has worked with any other um, council, but I know that this is something I would regularly review, and I did, I went through the entire Personnel Rules and Policies oh, quite a while ago, and then I, I actually recommended the deletion of all of the other items in the um, municipal code, because I mean, it is pretty standard in other cities to not have your Personnel Rules be held within your municipal code because they are something that are supposed to be updated on a regular basis and which is much more difficult when it's located inside your municipal code.
So that's the key, right, it's not in the municipal code anymore, it's referenced.
It's referenced, and similar to like the way we do fees, you know, they, they're referenced in the municipal code, but they're updated by resolution. So you that, you don't have to do a municipal code update every single time that you need to change a fee, so.
Which is the problem you run into if it's part of the municipal code, it's such a chore to change it, okay. Thank you for that, anybody from the public have any, in, has, has any input on the Personnel Code?
Seventeen oh one Danube Avenue, I have a question, I noticed that you deleted the areas of the Personnel Commission, and I didn't see anything in the new rules um, addressing the Personnel Commission. Is there gonna be no more Personnel Commission?
There will be no more Personnel Commission, by design.
Other questions, anybody online or on the phone? Council have any further questions before there's a motion? Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
We're waiving the first reading and going to the second.
Yep, are we, uh, waive, is there a motion to waive the first reading?
I make a motion to waive the first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Menjoz Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, next item is a public hearing item, and it's the first one of the evening, it's a public hearing and waiver of the second reading of an ordinance expanding the Downtown Business Improvement District Board from seven to nine members and setting meeting dates.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, um, we are at the second reading of this ordinance, and it is expanding the bid board from seven members to nine members. And additionally, it calls for um, setting the meeting dates for this board through resol- through a resolution. So concurrently, we also attach the resolution with those um, meeting dates, and that should all be in your pocket. The bid will meet the second and fourth Wednesday from five thirty, beginning at five thirty at City Hall.
Thank you for that, and this is a public hearing, um, so I'll just ask a quick question before we open the public hearing to the public. Um, do we run into the same issue making this part of the municipal code that we ran into with the Personnel? I believe the meeting dates are established by resolution and reference in the ordinance, so it's a resolution. Points to the resolution, it doesn't actually reference the meeting dates themselves. Correct. Sounds good, and with that, we will open this public hearing to the public. Um, does anyone from the public have any input favorable or unfavorable on this um, item tonight? Do we have anybody online or on the phone? With that, we will bring the matter back, close the public hearing, and bring this item to the council for further discussion. Or the council will entertain a motion at this point to approve the public hearing and waiver of the second reading of an ordinance expanding the Downtown Business Improvement District from seven to nine members.
Alicia, just wanna clarify, these meetings are open to the public, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so just to make sure that people know, that they're aware, citizens are aware that they can attend these meetings.
Yes, and they are encouraged to attend.
And if I can add, the change in meeting time was to allow more public to attend, the, the prior meeting times were at nine A M. During most times when people work, eight thirty or nine, it wa- it was in the morning regardless, right? And so the intent is similar to other commissions and boards that the city operates, allowing the public to attend these meetings and 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 be a participant in these type of items that the bid board is is considering. There a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Menjoz Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, item seven, another public hearing item in the last one of the evening, which is a public hearing and waiver of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section six three two of the Selma Municipal Code. which is a public hearing and waiver of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section six-three-two of the Selma Municipal Code relating to animal control.
Hello, counsel. You guys, uh, approved the first reading at the last meeting, which was a lifetime ago, but just a reminder, this, um, the this amendment to the municipal code simply currently in the Selma's municipal code, it designates specifically by name, Second Chance Animal Shelter as who holds the authority for animal control in the city. This municipal code update removes their name and just puts the power back into the Chief of Police specifically. And I just want to clarify that it gives him the power of delegation as well. So should the city ever, um, enter into another contract with an agency or, you know, hire an animal control officer, things of that nature, the Chief of Police is allowed to delegate, but it is still under his control and authority and oversight. So that's what the change is meant to to do.
With that, we will bring the matter to council. Are there any questions from the council before we open the matter to the public or public input? Hearing none will open the matter to the public for public input at this time. Does anyone have any input on this public hearing item regarding animal control? Okay, come on up.
Two thousand, uh, three Alton. Now, can I have a clear reading? Who's going to be in charge? See, if I have an issue with an animal. So yeah, we have neighbors. They have a couple of bulldogs right next to me and the fence is about ready to fall. If those dogs come into my property, who am I supposed to call? That's issues. Who's going to be taking in charge if, you know, somebody is, you know, could be hurt by a dog coming into their property or whatever? Going to be the, who do you call? What's, I know Second Chance was before. Who's in charge now? Who's, what's the number? Because I have issue with people. I said, they've called and they can't find an answer. Who's in charge of the animal control in the city of Selma? On record and have a number so the citizens will know who's going to be in charge. Definitely. Can that, um, information be out so everybody knows what to what to do if they have an issue?
All right, thank you. City Manager?
Well, I'll I'll answer the question and then Chief, if you want to add anything. Um, the the number to call is the normal police department phone number. It's, uh, eight-nine-six-two-five-two-five. And there's a phone tree that will direct you to the Animal Services Department. Um, if you're, if it's after hours, um, let's say after four PM or, uh, on a Sunday when the shelter is closed, then, um, you would still call that number and PD, uh, officers would would respond to the call.
Okay, I just wondered, just wait, so people would know what to do because, you know, place to call, get things, an issue like that. Thank you.
Just additionally, we did put that on December thirteenth to just contact eight-nine-six-two-five-two-five for any future animal control service or animal service calls. So and so.
My name's Brenda Prado. I just wanted to say I have a dog for you from January third. And I called Selma PD. They said there wasn't anything in place. Anybody want to husky? I don't know what to do with it anymore. If someone can reach out to me.
Question for animal, um, the animal services or is, um, the Selma Animal Shelter taking owner surrenders?
It's not mine. It was found on the freeway.
Got it.
The gas station off ninety-nine and Mountain View Chevron.
That's city. Wait, right within the city limits. For animals found within the city limits, what's the procedure at this time?
Contact eight-nine-six-two-five-two-five and then we'll dispatch animal services out. January third, you know, maybe there was some miscommunication for that. I apologize. It's always a transition. Uh, but, uh, eight-nine-six-two-five-two-five.
Can they bring the animals to the shelter during business hours?
Yes, absolutely. And we'll actually talk about that in our department update as well.
Department update?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prado. Anybody else? With that, we will, uh, anybody online on the phone like to say anything? With that, we will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to council. Does council have any input on this item before there is a motion for the vote? Um, we've talked about this, this second, second reading, but I will reiterate that since I was around for the, for when this ordinance was changed, it was so that the animal control officer could, um, fine levy fines citations. I believe Ms. Prado remembers exactly when that happened. For dogs that were getting out, getting out of fences on a repeated basis and the shelter had to keep picking them up. And they were a problem. And there was no way they could find at that time, um, the animal, um, control officer. So that was it. But the the way this reads is if the city had no control and it was flying at a thousand miles an hour free without, you know, any control over animal control. That never happened. City was always firmly in control. The PD was always firmly in control. And as everybody knows, you can't have an ordinance that goes against the state law. And the state law is that the PD is the final authority on animal issues. And that's why the PD always controlled what happened with bike quarantines, because that's really where public safety meets animal control. And so the PD, during the tenure of the animal shelter, would decide on any bike quarantine, the disposition of that dog after ten days of being quarantined in the shelter. That's a big thing the shelter does, provides a public safety service for the city. That's just the reality. That's the way it is. And the PD has always been firmly in control of that. The shelter never, ever made a public safety decision on what happened with bike quarantines and animals that were considered a threat to public safety. What the shelter did was care for stray and unwanted and sick animals. And they did a great job of it. And now we're entering into a new phase with the city firmly in control, incurring all those costs and all that liability for this. So we shall see. This is the second reading of the of this, and the motion is to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Section six-three-two of the Selma Municipal Code relating to animal control. Is there a motion regarding this?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Menjoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
No.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
No. And with that, we will move on to future agenda items. This is the council request for future agenda items. It's not subject to public comment. Items require a consensus to be placed on a future agenda. Do council members have any items they would like to put before the majority or the the council for a future agenda items?
Yes, um, Mayor, I'd like to bring back the lights, the cafe lights.
Is there a consensus to place the issue of the cafe lights on a future meeting? Say the yes? Yep, I'll say yes. Councilmember Garrett, you brought it up, so you're a yes. Councilmember Menjoza Navarro? Councilmember Treheal? Okay, we got four, so that'll that'll go on. Any other ones? I'll bring up Mr. Smith from the mosquito abatement district. I I have his letter. And it it details his, um, his qualifications in terms of his background. So, um, if we could get council consensus to put on the next, um, council, uh, council meeting of a, uh, letter of support for Mr. Smith to be appointed the mosquito abatement district. You good with that? Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Okay, so that's unanimous.
Oh, I also need to get an update on Brett Linger Park. I know you mentioned about getting that whole park refurbished or an update. So if we could get an update on that, that would be great.
If I'm not mistaken, um, Community Services Director was going to provide an update as part of our department update, if that's okay?
Oh, today? Perfect.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I've been getting, and I think another council member has been, a barrage of emails regarding how funds are assigned to road projects. I'm not going to bring up specifics, but I would like to have an agenda item on the city council stating how wrote, how funds are assigned for projects so that we can talk about what is allocated to projects. I'm sure you know the Golden State Corridor project come up. Um, but, you know, I've been getting pulled in on this, and I think, you know, this is something I would like to have so that we kind of settle this matter. Not a legal matter, but just something that the council can discuss as an issue. Uh, because projects do come up occasionally, and it's good to know how these funds are assigned to projects. And you know, what what's paid for and what isn't as a regular course of business.
Mr. Mayor, if I may answer or provide my perspective on that, on that request, um, you know, when, first of all, the Golden State Project is not a city-funded project, as you're, as you're aware. But when the city selects road projects, we provide, um, the funding source as part of our, um, when we present it as part of our Capital Improvement Program, our CIP budget. And so those are discussions that we were going to have anyway as part of the budget in the CIP process. Um, and so and and every, you know, it would be difficult for us to come back and say, well, this is how we say these funds are allocated to this specific project. Because all the projects vary in terms of their nature, their scope, their cost, et cetera. And so, um, when we present projects to the city council for approval, that's when we would say, "Council, we have these funds in development impact fees or Measure C or whatever it is." But as from our, from staff perspective, it would be more productive and beneficial for us to provide that information for the specific road projects that we're presenting to the city, because that's information we provide anyway.
Okay, so what I'm responding to without naming it is the perspective and the reason the city will give that the the road funds are the city council's selection. And I don't believe that's the case. I I I've never selected the funds for a road project for a particular project where the money comes out of. That's staff. That's your job. That's what you come up with. So.
What's what's the specific project?
I'm not going to mention it. It's a potential legal matter. I'm not going to mention that. You know what? You know what I'm talking about, Councilman Treheal? So what I would like is is this road, this is to avoid future misunderstandings in the future, so we have a a clear understanding, a clear template, because I think there's a misunderstanding out there in terms of what gets funded for road projects.
Can I say something? Because last year, so the previous, the previous, uh, four years or the previous past practice has been that our old engineer would come to us and say, this year, we're going to do, um, we're going to, this is what I was, this is what we're, this is what me and you or me and Mr. Mayor, we're talking about that. The engineer would come to us and say, okay, guys, we're going to do, we're going to do the alphabet, alphabet streets, A, B, C, D. And we would just, okay, but the past practice last year, we had a really good discussion. We said, wait a minute. Who who dictates to bring the projects to our, to the council and then we approve it? And we came up with, and I don't know if you remember this, but we came up with a plan that we said, let's before before our budget, let's get staff to review and come to us and tell us and give us an explanation as to how you guys are coming to us and bringing the needs. And and what was it, what was what was come about was that 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 our engineering was giving us the types of roads there were, the usage and the and 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 the importance of them. And that's how we, that's what I understand that we came about for the future placing of projects, because prior to that, we would have a meeting and we would all say, okay, well, we're going to, what? We would ask actually the engineer, what are we going to do this year? And he would tell us, okay, we're going to do the ABCs. And then next year, well, and we said, well, and we actually, you brought it up. You said, well, what about this street on the country? That street's really important. And so I'm under the understanding that we were going to have city staff come to us and bring us an actual list of the needs and the the wants of what the most important need is in individual streets, and that's how we're going to pick.
Your your comment is is well taken, and I appreciate that, Councilman Treheal. I don't recall having a direct one-on-one discussion with you about.
Not with you. I'm not talking about.
But, um, I would say that you're, what you're talking about is eight miles high in terms of prioritizing road projects. I get that. That's great. That's something that needs to be done and is done. What I'm talking about is the actual funds themselves that get allocated for these projects. Having an agenda item apparently is threatening, because I mean, I'm getting all sorts of pushback on this. It shouldn't be. All I want is just to be educated by staff in terms of, can I just talk, please? Can I just get this out and you can talk however long you want? Um, all I'm looking for is road projects and what kind of funding is brought to bear for different types of road projects, depending on what types of road projects they are or improvement projects. Not a really difficult item, but I think it's something that's misunderstood based on the frequent emails that I'm receiving from a particular person in town.
And then your point is well taken, Mayor. Um, you know, it's it's something, like I mentioned before, it's information that we provide anyway during, um, during the budget um, meetings. Um, it'd be helpful to know which specific project you're referring to so we can address that particular decision, which, um, you know, it may have, it may have been a decision that was made a long time ago before any of the staff currently was was here. Um, but I can tell you now, um, without an agenda item, the the way that that, um, those decisions are made are what's available, what type of project is it, what's the priority for the for the city council and for the community? Um, and so, but when we bring actual specific road projects for your consideration, all that information is going to be listed and 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 transparent.
And I appreciate that. This is a great impromptu response that you're making. But I'm looking for an agenda item that involves the public and allows the public to interact, because there are people out there. This is really I'm talking to, the people, business owners and people, the end users, the people who live here. So they have a chance to participate, either come to the council meeting or call in in terms of and say, "Okay, I see what pays for, you know, road projects, and I see what's typically provided by, you know, projects in the city."
During the budget, um, when we provide the CIPs, typically when we have that covered. And there's public hearings and, um, there's staff reports.
Great. And I'm asking for an accelerated timeline on that if the council is okay with that, if there's a consensus.
We're just not there yet.
Okay, I'm asking the council, is there a council consensus to have this item to clear up for the public what funds are used to pay for streets? This is a tip, this is a pretty high level, you know, discussion in terms of what types of funds typically pay for streets. And it's allows the public, you, to actually interact on this. Councilmember Garrett, would you be willing to put this on the on the agenda?
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho, you willing to put this on an agenda soon, next couple, next couple of months? Okay. Councilmember Menjoza Navarro?
I don't think I'm a hundred percent clear, so.
Okay, well, we got a consensus, so.
That's fine.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Treheal? Did you have anything to add? We have a consensus, so it's going to, um, it's going to go on. But did you have anything to add?
I I just wanted, I just wanted, um, I just want to, um, explain the interpretation that you were, um, assuming that I was saying, and in reality, what I was interpreting was that there's been lengthy discussions in the last since this, since the new city manager has come aboard. There's been lots of conversation as to how the operationals have been run in the past and now. And when you're asking me to put on the agenda and our city manager is not prepared to, I mean, it's one thing for us as city council members to go ahead and say, we're going to put this on the agenda and our city staff's out and we're not ready. It 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 doesn't make sense, because, I mean, me and you have a nine-to-five, eight-to-five job, but in reality, the staff has, is the one that organizes this. So with you, uh, with with the majority saying that, yeah, I want it up in two months or a month, that's fine. But what I want to, what I want to clarify is this. Going back to the process of what's been gone in the past and what's going on right now, I thought, I thought our staff has explained itself properly to a point where saying, we understand that we go through the needs, the importance and the safety. And that's how we take and we and we go through the CIP, we get and we budget it, we put it, that's it.
And that's how we take and we, and we go through the CIP, we get and we budget it, we put it, that's it.
Right. Obviously, I'm not, I'm not, I'm really, that's a different topic, but thank, thank you, Councilman.
You can't cut me off, Mr. Mayor. You can't cut me off. I'm not done.
And by the way, I'm not asking you to put this item on. I'm asking council for consensus, not asking you, Mr. Trahill.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not done.
Well, then go, finish, finish up.
So in response to the mayor, council in the past has had an engineer just come and tell the council what the projects were done. Now that we have a new city manager, he's educated the city council and he's telling them that there's a CIP involved prior to budget. And we've had full discussions because I guess people don't understand, they're going to ask our staff to just present a, a presentation, which is, I understand and I accept it. Do not change and do not say that I'm trying to answer a question not correct. So for that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak, but with all respect, the staff has been doing everything they can to bring all our needs to the best abilities.
Thank you. Just for clarification, council, um, you know, we were planning on bringing this information as part of the CIP within the next couple of months. And I, it sounded like your request was within the next couple of months anyway. So is it okay if we proceed as we originally planned with presenting the CIP with the information within the next couple of months?
So that's was my original request is to, to have within the next couple of months. And what you said was, we're going to do it in, right, you know, before the budget.
Right.
So that's seven, one, this is January, right? So, so it, that didn't sound like what you initially said. I appreciate you clarifying your timeline, city manager, that this will be on the agenda within a couple of months and we're good.
And I, I think the, where the miscommunication occurred is you were requesting for a separate agenda item. And I, I think where I was going with it could, is can we combine that information as we normally have had in the past with the CIP projects that we're presenting? And so it sounds like we're, we're talking about the same thing, the same timeline. So absolutely, we can, we can bring that.
Okay. All right. So now do we have any other future agenda items? That anyone would like to bring up? Okay. With that, we'll move on to departmental reports. City manager?
Uh, nothing to report, um, except I think we're about a month out from President's Day, but um, just a reminder to the council that that falls on a Monday, the 19th of February. So the council meeting that day will be February 20th. Thank you.
Deputy attorney?
Nothing to report.
Deputy city manager, development services. Jerome King?
As I stated, um, community development is fully staffed, which we're super excited about and um, getting things out timely manner, I would hope the use of open gov and, and things like that, um, calls have been reduced. I think we did a presentation a couple of months ago in terms of where permits are at, being able to track those things. And, and staff is really being proactive in terms of reaching out to applicants and calling them, making sure that they understand where their project's at. We had an incident, um, where a property owner or, um, an applicant, um, word got back to staff that it was quote unquote, the city holding up the application. And what we did was we went and reviewed, they had been given comments. We'd actually followed up with them at least one time as to, are you guys resubmitting? We want to make sure that we didn't miss anything in terms of processing. So the system is working, staff is actually being proactive, which I think is a, is a new thing for a lot of the public in terms of making sure that permits are getting processed in a timely manner.
That's, that's so important.
So I just, I, I wanted to thank staff for being proactive in a lot of instances and including, um, not only the applicant, but property owner. So everybody's aware of where their projects at.
And I thank you for interacting with the business owners and with the property owners in the, in the town because they, you know, they come to us council members and we go to you for the professional advice and we appreciate that. Not a matter of not having gone over this before, but going over it a million times so that people know, I know it's aggravating. I know it, you know, you know it backwards and forwards, but it's good for our citizens to have that refresher on the knowledge so that it makes it easier for them to learn what their city is about and what they're doing. Thank you for that. Um, director of administrative services?
I'm happy to report that our classing, our classification and compensation study will have to kick off this week and we will be full into it as of next week. We're excited about that.
Community services director?
Good evening again, mayor and council members. Um, what I have passed out is our new branding for our department. Um, we are very excited to launch Sparks. Um, this has been a few months in the making, about six months in the making for our team. And it's a renewed, um, commitment to our community to provide the best services that we possibly can. Um, within that, you will see, uh, different letters, um, within the Sparks, um, name. And it stands for seniors, parks, arts, um, recreation and community services. Again, these are some of the programs that we provide. Um, what we wanted to start off with was an overview activity guide to give our community. To my knowledge, we've never had anything like this, um, within the city. It's kind of a one-stop shop for information within our department. These are not all of the events and programs that we run, but these are kind of the annual events, the larger things that are going on within our community. Um, we're, we're really proud of the starts of this. We anticipate, um, additional marketing and branding coming in the future, but I think this is a great way to start it off, um, for our community. So big thanks to my team for working together with this. Um, the new logo, the new things that are coming on. I, I think it's pretty exciting. Um, what we've been able to accomplish in some of the events and, and programs that we've done. Um, in addition to that, I did want to give the update on Bretlinger Park, um, as, as requested. Um, so I am very excited to announce that all of the contracts have been signed and, um, equipment has been ordered for Bretlinger Park. Um, we are now waiting for all of those, um, equipment pieces to come in. We anticipate breaking ground sometime in March for that program or for that park. Um, and we anticipate a, about two to three week build time for that. So, um, once we have a date, um, locked in, I will absolutely, um, let council and the community know. Um, we do plan on releasing, um, the, the renderings this week on social media to start letting people know that this is what's coming. Um, but to date, everything has been ordered and we are excited to go. So again, um, also within our, our department, uh, currently my son Pinocchio is running at the art center. Um, these are the, the cool kids players, so it's always fun. Um, I have yet to see it, but the, um, I did get a chance to go last week and, and look at the new set. So they, they're doing some pretty great things there. Um, and we have Little League that will be, or not Little League, I apologize, T-ball, um, that will be opening up soon, um, for registration. So we're excited to kick that off and, and get all of that going. One thing that I did want to notate within that, um, within that brochure, that activity guide, um, is we will be hosting our first Evers Selma Arts and Culture Fest, um, coming up, um, in the, the May-June timeframe. Um, and this is going to be a celebration, um, of our community. One of the things that I think makes this community so fantastic is the diverse cultures that we have here. And so, um, we, we know that we want to open up the art center to more community events and do things like that. So we will be hosting that as the first year here. Um, we will be inviting, um, the, the community, um, through arts, dance, food, um, to participate in this one-day celebration just to celebrate our culture here within our community. So we hope you guys can attend. That's all for my department.
Senior center? Senior center events. So that would go to Pioneer Village for now.
Yes.
You're not actually referencing the senior center, the, the address at this point because it's, it's not open yet.
Correct, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Great job. That looks really good. I've, I've never seen that before where it's all in one place. That's awesome. Um, okay. Uh, fire chief, Jordan Webster?
Council, I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. City clerk, public information officer?
Mayor, members of the council, so I have two items to report on. Uh, the updated commuter alert from Caltrans has been issued. Uh, a few nights this week, there will be a closure. We ask that, um, not only council, city staff, members of the public, just focus on the latest, uh, commuter alerts that are subject to change based on, um, weather activities. Uh, the second item that I'd like to bring up is the, uh, Golden State Boulevard project. So as you may have noticed that the landscaping has been, um, updated, the, um, I think the biggest focus that I'd like the public to know and, uh, obviously council and, um, city staff is, uh, to look out for the lane closures that are being posted on a regular basis.
Thank you for that. Public works director?
Uh, we have a few things we're working on right now. The main thing is, uh, facilitating quotes and getting contractors into the buildings for Salazar and Senior Community Center. Um, start, we're starting to draft the RFPs for those two buildings to get them out to bid. Um, I'm also looking at, uh, quotes that I've been gathering for the repair or the replacement rather of the wrought iron fence along Rose Avenue at Bretlinger Park. Uh, I guess that's been something that's been brought up way before I came. So we have facilitated bids on the fencing. We're also getting bids in right now for the concrete sidewalk to go full width all the way to the corner and replacing the ADA ramp at the corner where you turn to come into the ballpark. Um, we also have quite a few fence issues that we're dealing with, uh, one of them at Bretlinger. Um, the transient, the homeless, um, have come in there and they've actually cut and ripped the chain link fence open so that they can crawl through it. Um, this is kind of an ongoing thing where we are currently experiencing and, and chief has been great working with us, his whole staff. Um, but we've had a lot of vandalism lately. We've had bathrooms broke into, graffiti in the bathrooms, stealing deadbolt locks off the bathroom doors. Um, so we have been trying to combat this the whole two months that I've been here. The issues just keep arising, uh, in different locations. So there's some fence issues also at Bretlinger besides the wrought iron that we're working on. Um, besides that, just getting staff up, uh, training, uh, up so that they're all current on all their certifications they need. And, uh, that's pretty much it for me right now. There, there's a lot more, but I don't have time. So, and neither do you.
Thank you. Police chief, Alcoraz?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First, uh, I wanted to quickly start by, uh, with us tonight, we have our investigations unit, including our investigation sergeant. I wanted to recognize them. In March of 2023, we had a homicide over just, just down the street from here. Our investigators did a extremely diligent and thorough job writing over 22 warrants, uh, conducting countless interviews, reviewing countless, um, megabytes of, of data that they had to sift through with all those warrants and made an arrest on January 28th of this year. I'm sorry, December 28th of this year of 2023. I apologize. Goodness gracious. It's been a long night. But I just wanted to, um, really recognize them because what they did was they did everything that they could possibly do in regards to that homicide case. Uh, homicide case or cases are difficult in, in their very nature. However, when you have cases where you really have involved parties that are just not cooperative and not forthcoming, it compounds a difficulty in, in solving those cases. But our investigators didn't let that stop them. They continued to work diligently. Um, my asks were tremendous and they stepped up and met all those asks. And I just want to recognize them because it's extremely important that people know the work that goes into those. That's just one case. And the city doesn't just stop. You know, we continue with other issues and, um, my staff is just, our staff is just, they're exceptional. And I just want to recognize them. So thank you very much. And I appreciate, apologize, you, you all had to stay so late. Thank you. Additionally.
And they didn't even sit down. They've been standing the whole time. It's amazing.
I, I told them not, not to sit. And I issued them all smiles, you can see. Um, so I just kind of wanted to recognize them so they can get going and get some rest. Cause I know tomorrow we'll be cracking the whip again. So, um, thank you all.
Thank you.
Additionally, animal services, well, on December 13th, we put out an email, I'm sorry, on Facebook to our community members that for the future, any, any animal service, uh, requests would be gone, would go through eight nine six two five two five. This has been a, a whirlwind of a, uh, project. Um, you know, we had Plan A and, and that didn't work and Plan B didn't work and Plan C didn't work. And on the midnight hour, we came with Plan X and I think we hired, um, the best professionals in Fresno County when it comes to humans, I mean, animal services. So for that, we're extremely, extremely grateful and appreciative of the animal services team that we've hired and it's, it's, it's great to have them here. I know the first week was, was, uh, a lot of just kind of assessing the facility itself and then, um, getting it up, up to speed, um, and rehabbed so that we can accept animals. Um, so with that, uh, additionally, we worked on hours. So our facility hours opened to the public are 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Monday through Saturday. We have ACL services Monday through Saturday from 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. If people have any animal services, uh, requests, they can contact eight nine six two five two five. There's also on our phone tree, we will direct them to a phone number and I, I, I do have that number, but my glasses don't work that well to see what the number is. I believe it's two one eight, but I, I'm not exact. We've pushed that out on social media. Um, Selma Police Animal Services will also have their own Facebook page where they'll push out, uh, information on social media as well. Additionally, um, we have already planned our first grand opening event where our community can come and visit the shelter, visit our new staff members and get free microchipping as we register animals into our, uh, new database. And that's going to be February 3rd, 2024, from 12 p.m. to 3 p.m. So we're very excited about that, um, as we move forward with animal services. And by the way, we have accepted dogs and luckily we've been able to get them and reconnect them back with their, their pet owners. So that's kind of where we're at today. Um, and so with that microchipping, that's additionally, that, that's going to help as well uh, in reconnecting those, those animals with their owners. And more importantly, educating them on the importance of securing their animals, uh, so their animals don't get injured or injure someone else. Um, so I think enforcement, um, though not ideal, it has to be, uh, a part that we use in the future so that we can get garnish compliance, you know, and, and I'll, I'll reiterate that again. I, I remember my first complaint as police chief when I was in this other city just north of us. I genuinely had a gentleman call and complain and said that he was upset because he got a ticket for making U-turn in front of a school district. And as I spoke with him, he wasn't upset because he got cited, uh, for doing that because he was in the wrong. But he was, he was upset because he didn't get a warning like every year prior to that. And, and it, that's, that's the reality of our business. Unfortunately, sometimes we just have to use that enforcement tool to gain compliance so that we can move forward and we can create the safest environment for everybody. So that's, that's kind of just a big component that I, I feel extremely confident, uh, Terry Rockhold and her team are going to be able to facilitate for us. So if anyone has any questions about the animal services?
You, yes, sir. Um, so thank you for that. Um, what happens if someone has an animal that's out after hours, after four o'clock? Who do they call?
So if it's, if it's not vicious, then they would, we would connect, uh, we'd create the call for service, give it to animal services and in the morning they would go and, and try to connect with that person.
So if the dog is just lost and just out, the, he's not going to get picked up until the next day, if he's still around?
Yeah. If, if it's a stray, uh, Mr. Mayor, then that's, we would connect them with animal services the next day. You know, I, what I will say in, in doing my research and if you look at social media, every community in Fresno County, the state of California, this nation is having the same issue that we're having. For reasons, I, you know, I, I'm probably not at my level to understand, but, but there's really no ideal answer or one fix-all answer to any of these and many of the problems that we encounter uh, with regards to animal services and a lot of other issues in our communities. Um, so, you know, those, those animals typically will get back home.
How about Sunday? What happens if someone sees a stray running on Sunday or a stray that's been, typically they've been around two weeks and then they say, tired of this, I'm going to call animal.
They can call in and we'll get the information over to animal services the next day on Monday.
So it, but it won't be Sunday?
No.
Be that day?
Unless it's vicious or there's injured, sick or injured.
Okay. And then, um, in terms of the city hired two people and then, and then a pub, and then somebody from Fresno, you made, who's going to clean the shelter? Cause you know, you're going to get a lot of, a lot of animals in eventually.
We're, we're working on those.
You're working on the assignment?
Yes.
Will the city in this might not? Will the city, and this might not be you, this might be city manager, will the city be creating classifications within the Selma PD for kennel cleaners, kennel techs?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking at, at that. And it just depends, it's going to be probably part-time, part-timers to begin with. So we're looking at what's most advantageous for the city in terms of the organizational structure. Doesn't matter what you call them really, it's as long as they can clean the kennels, right? But we'll, if, if it is, if it does require council action, it'll be coming soon.
Okay. And since this is so new, in the future, you know what, we've heard lot about second chance, not providing reports, not providing reports. Maybe our citizens could get reports on what's going on with the shelter, like intake and outtake. I'd love to know how many dogs are coming in and what's, what's happening.
So, so, so would we, Mr. Mayor.
Great. So in the future, that, that would be great. This is not a, I'm just one you know, recommending this at this time. We can bring it up as an agenda item or an action item in the future. Don't know if it'll be approved. But I'd love, I'd love to see a disposition on that, you know, reports, see what the city's doing.
Hundred percent, Mayor. And, and that's the point, you know, the, the level of communication and the level of service and proactivity that you'll see from the city-run shelter will be a big difference to, to what, how it was run before, including communication.
Okay, with that, we will.
Actually, I've, I've got more, Mr. Mayor. So, and because to, to point out the work that our people are doing about on, sorry. I, in front of you, I have some flyers for you all. On December 25th, our officers conducted a vehicle stop on a subject they knew to have a felony warrant for sales of narcotics. So here's a suspect that we knew or believed was selling narcotics. What that warrant was sitting out for a few weeks. What our officers did do though is they were very strategic on planning when to stop this individual. And during that vehicle stop, when they, when they felt it was the right time, they located a loaded rifle with high capacity magazines, three assault rifles with numerous rounds and extended magazines and a loaded nine millimeter firearm. This individual was a convicted felon and all of those weapons in their very nature were illegal, but especially for a convicted felon to possess. So in that one vehicle stop, they took five illegal firearms, countless rounds of ammunition, high capacity magazines from a known convicted felon. So I just wanted to kind of highlight their work in not jumping the gun and being very strategic on how to use the tools to make our city as safe as possible. So I just wanted to give them a little kudos. And lastly, on January 31st, 2024, 9 a.m., we will be honoring Gonzalo Carrasco Jr. in front of the police department. Just to, to honor our brother and read our resolution that was passed on last year in 2023. And we'll read that resolution every year as long as the family is, is good with that.
Is the family going to be there for that?
Yes, they will. Yes, they have a large family, so. And I promise that's it. I apologize, everybody.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Treheal, do you have a report for us tonight?
Just, just one. Before departing on December 16th, my old staff at Max's, my staff at Treheal's and part of the Summer Business Alliance, we did what we've been doing for the last couple of years and helped out at the for the exceptional sports and youth with needs. We provided breakfast to about 350 kids and parents for Christmas. So I just want to give a shout out to past employees of mine that came out and helped out and the Summer Business Alliance. They did a really good job and, you know, it was really, it was really moving and, and I really want to, I also want to rec, I want to just give a shout out to the Selma, Selma cares because they're right catty corner to us and, you know, the, how many people were given food and just, it was just amazing. So, you know, the Selma cares is, is a really important program. They did a really good job. And, but it was neat to see that, you know, they were giving out foods to the, to the needs and we were feeding the kids and we had Santa there. So I just wanted to give a big shout out to the Selma cares, Summer Business Alliance for helping my our breakfast and all the volunteers. They did a really good job. Aside of that, thank you. Nothing else to report.
Councilmember Mendoza tomorrow.
I just want to say Happy New Year to everyone. I know it feels like a long time ago that it's been a new year. And thank you to staff. I did attend a few things. I had to kind of remember what all was happening during Christmas, the Christmas break, but I did attend. Tony Born, he's, he was the executive director for Fresno Cog. He retired and so I was invited to, to attend his retirement luncheon and that was really nice because I was able to connect with the Public Works for Fresno County. And I'm excited to meet with them because we did have some conversations regarding some county roads. So I'm excited to meet with them. We met with a developer. Thank you, city manager and deputy city manager for giving us and, or for inviting me to talk to this developer because it really gave me insight of what, you know, kind of the struggles that some of them were having because they had to go with what old practices were and now we're trying to get them up to, you know, standards, a, a, a more higher standards. And so at the end of the day, I think Jerome and, and this developer became best friends, which is good. And then I attended the 11th Cohort Central Valley Training Center graduation. There was 25 graduates there. Out of the 25, I believe, eight of them were from Selma. And so it's really, you know, good to, to, to hear that we have graduates from Selma. And the speakers, the student speakers just were amazing. There was one, one speaker that at the end I said, do you live in Selma? He said, no. I said, oh, man, you would have been great to run for, for office. Because he really had a really good speech and just really good head on his shoulder. My shoulders. And, and then the other thing is, you know, with this whole second chance animal shelter and just the misinformation that was out there, I had a lot of people reach out to me. Either direct messaging me on social media or sending me emails. Some of them were not very nice, but at the end of the day, when I was able to give them the facts, then they apologized and said, I'm sorry, you know, I didn't know the whole facts. So thank you for meeting with me. So I was able to meet with a couple of community members and also outside from, you know, the city of Selma. And so it really gave me an eye opener as to the community being such a big community, you know, large community. There's a lot of fostering out there. There's a lot of programs. There's a couple places, I think it was called the Kirkland Foundation, which is a really good program. She was going to send the person I met, she was going to send me some information about grants and, and possible, you know, there's a I think like a a capture, release and, or spay and release. It's a specific, I think it's trap, spay and release or something like that for cats, because there's not really a lot of cat havens and things like that. And so that's about the best that they can do. But it, like I said, I was able to, to have those conversations with the community and, and clear up some of that misinformation. So with that, I think that's about it.
Councilmember Gara.
I don't have a, a whole lot to report, but I would like to ask Chief, this arrest on the 25th, this felon, do you know if he's still incarcerated or is he out on the streets?
That's part of a larger investigation, unfortunately.
That's it. Nothing to report.
Mayor Proton Cho.
Yeah, it seems so long ago, you know, last year, all this project, we did do it. I almost forgot all about it. Did take a good vacation, so that was needed. When I thanked the staff, you guys did a great job tonight. A few of the things we did do during December is some, a Central Valley Lioness Lions Club, we adopted seven families and we provided them with food and necessity like paper towel, toilet paper, et cetera. And every member of the family got a present. So that was a really neat, we had our, our own Santa that we did take it to each household and those family had a really nice Christmas. That was great. And I did work on the Selma care. I think we did over 400 boxes and we had toys for the kids also. And Kiwanis Club, Selma Kiwanis did a senior breakfast that we do every year and we did that at the Methodist Church since we did it normally do it at the senior center. So, so we did okay over there. It was good. I want to commend Public Works. Man, Witsen, it looks fantastic. I mean, it's just so nice. It's like driving into another city because it never felt that great. So I think once our veterans banner goes back up, it's going to make our city proud. We do have a mixer coming up this week. It is going to be at Cattlemen's. Usually that one's a pretty good food one. So it's at five o'clock at Cattlemen's. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. You donated toys during the Christmas season. We participated in the scavenger hunt. Selma's first scavenger hunt, we had a tree that someone won, didn't need to be present and was very nice. Thank you for, for doing that. I attended an SKF board meeting. Just wanted to give a heads up to the city about, and I think we heard it tonight from the, from the Public Works Director. Copper's big. Copper thieves are back like it's 2003 again. The Fresno County, my supervisor Magzig was telling me that their solar facility was broken into and they had a huge theft. And fortunately for the county, they did what a lot of counties don't. They don't own their solar. So it was all on the company that leases to them. They're the ones that have to eat the loss of business, you know, the lot, the, the the loss of revenue that they're facing from the county. But the county's having to replace that, that power. So I mean, it's, the hurt's going around everywhere and it's going to take a while to, to replace that. But they're, they're out there. They're trying to get the copper. Supervisor Magzig's warning was beware of your vacant buildings. If you've got any city buildings that have any wiring, they're going to break in, they're going to try to take it. I don't think I'm, you know, giving a newsflash to anyone here, but I think it's, um, I think that's something to definitely look out for this year and appreciate the improvements that Public Works Maintenance is doing. Um, I want to say thank you to the Selma city staff for everything that you're doing. I got an email from Fresno Cog, the new director who took over for Tony Born. I was at his retirement party too. Robert Phipps, he said, good job to city staff for getting the housing element in on time. So the city doesn't have to pay anymore on that. Good job. As, and he sent that with a lot of smiley face emojis. So you've got like six of them on that. Good job. Fire Department, very good job on the young man's funeral, the eight-year-old. I got a an email from the, the mother on that. Fire Department did an amazing job going out, showing a lot of caring. And that was, that really showed the city at its absolute finest to go above and beyond for that, for that young person who was taken away from us way too soon. Based on what we talked about tonight, I'm hearing the conversation in Selma talking about the need for change in 2024. So it's going to be very interesting where our city goes. The cat release program is actually the TNR, Trap Neuter Release. We did take in cats at the Second Chance Animal Shelter for a few years when we got a, we never got a grant because there aren't a lot of people know anything about animal shelters, you know, there aren't a lot of grants out there for animal shelters. So we got a bequest from someone who grew up around Selma and we were able to plow 73,000 into a tough shed. And we put cats in there. So for a few brief shiny moments, we actually did take cats in, in Selma in our animal shelter and hopefully with all the great words we're hearing about the new shelter coming in, we'll be able to take them in again. So thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight is, I think that's it. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.